I need a motion to come out of closed session, please.
So move.
Second.
All in favor, show by raising your right hand. Thank you very much. Any opposed? All right. I would ask that we stand and have a moment of silence, and that would be followed by the pledge of allegiance by Mr. Flowers.
Thank you. Would you join me in a pledge of allegiance to our flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It seems as if we are missing two board members, but truly, we're only missing one. Mr. Rick Pridgen has had two major surgeries, and he hopes to be back at the school board meetings very soon. His recovery is going well, and we ask that you remember him in your prayers, he and his family. Thank you very much. Okay, we have here to present the $5,000 Tobacco Trust Fund Grant to Charles B. Acock High School Agricultural Department R. Representative John Arabel IV, Allison Jennings from Eastern Region Agricultural Education Coordinator, Andrew Mitchell, Cosby High School Assistant Principal, I mean, Charles B. Acock Assistant Principal, I was in California, sorry. Beverly Bowden House, our CTE Director, Debbie Grantham, CTE Assistant Director, Nancy Walker, Charles B. Acock CDC, Karen Cox, Charles B. Acock Agriculture Teacher, and she wrote the grant, please raise your hand, Mrs. Cox. She wrote the grant, come up. Tobacco Trust Fund Grant Representatives, and Charles B. Acock FFA Officers and Members. Now, there may be some individuals missing from Charles B. Acock tonight because Dr. Moore and some of the other administrators participating in a rising ninth grade open house tonight, and were unable to be here. So, I believe this is Mrs. Jennings?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Thank y'all so much for allowing us to be a part of this special presentation this evening and doing it in front of you. In 2000, the North Carolina General Assembly created the North Carolina Tobacco Trust Fund Commission as part of the master settlement agreement with tobacco manufacturing companies. Its purpose was to fund grant programs that encourage a strong agriculture industry by striving to make a positive impact on our North Carolina producers. The commission is a strong advocate for agriculture, and projects that support current and former members of tobacco families are a top priority for their funding. This year, the North Carolina Tobacco Trust Fund Commission awarded $180,000 to the North Carolina FFA Foundation to improve high school agriculture education programs throughout our state. This is the fourth time that the commission has given this money to North Carolina agriculture programs, totaling now over $720,000. Thirty-seven agriculture education programs and FFA chapters across our state will receive grants totaling up to $5,000 per program this year. I would say that this is the third time that Charles B. Acock High School has received one of these grants, all under the direction of Ms. Karen Cox, who has written each of these grants. So, it takes a lot of effort, and it is a lot of paperwork in order to get this to be pushed through. This evening, we are proud to present one of these grants to Charles B. Acock FFA for their project entitled "Cutting the Way with FFA", to provide funds for a CNC plasma cutting machine in their shop, their ag mechanics program, where we see this as an opportunity to not only engage students who are already involved in the program, but also to draw in students who have a passion for design and technology, and be able to show them some careers and pathways in the ag mechanics industry where they may have not seen them before. So, it is my honor to present Charles B. Acock High School with this $5,000 check this evening.
Representative Bell, do you have any comments you would like to make?
Thank y'all for letting me be here. Thank you for letting me be part of this. And I believe it's Mama Cox, is that what y'all call her? Just thank you for all you've done, not only for these students, but also supporting and continue to support agriculture all over Wayne County. Thank you very much.
Once you take the picture, you could come around and shake the hands of our board members. Yes, go down there. Congratulations to you all.
Congratulations.
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 Congratulations, you guys.
I wish that was a real check, we could go out with you.
Okay, all right.
Outstanding.
It's good to see you back to town.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, everybody.
Thank you for being here.
At this time, we will have a presentation for Wayne PACs by the Honorable Erica James.
Good evening, members of the board.
Good evening.
Thank you so much for allowing me to be here and speak with you regarding our PACs agreement. As you know, PACs is an acronym for Partnership Agreement for Community Teams with Schools. And I believe that you all have been provided a copy of that. Okay, good. And so, my purpose in speaking with you this evening is not to go through the details of that, because quite frankly, several of you have been a part of our meetings, our community stakeholder meetings, and you are quite familiar with the terms and the details of that agreement. So, and I do want to say thank you for agreeing to participate in that process. My purpose here tonight was to discuss with you and review with you some of the changes that we've had to make to that PACs agreement, and in fact, some additional changes since the latest version that I sent to you, and to give you an opportunity to ask questions, and hopefully not request any additional changes. As you know, we are planning to have a Raise the Age Workshop. The Department of Juvenile Justice from Raleigh is coming down to put that on, on April the 12th. And our plan is to be able to sign this agreement on that date at that workshop. And so, we need to finalize it prior to that. And to that end, I would say, regarding the changes, if you would take a look at Section 303B on page 11, Administrative Interventions, or School Administration Interventions, if you look at the bottom of that paragraph on the second to the last sentence, we've added short-term suspensions. And if you recall, this was a paragraph that dealt with the interventions that the school can take prior to any court involvement. As you know, this is a district-wide effort. And so, our other schools within the judicial district, Lenore County and Green County, are included in this agreement. And they specifically requested that we include that short-term suspension language. And so, you see the inclusion there for short-term suspension. Again, a reminder to you all and to the schools that we are not, the agreement does not attempt to take away any options that you've always had. We want you to recognize that those are still available to you. And to that end, they specifically requested that we add that in. And so, I thought it appropriate to add it to our Wayne agreement as well, to give our Wayne folks some relief and understanding that that is still part of the agreement. We certainly do want to discourage long-term suspensions, but recognize that there are appropriate circumstances where that might be necessary. Also, if you look at Section 3.04, this is on page 14 of that agreement, right after the letter L, and you'll see that's the list of the focused acts, you all are familiar with that. After letter L, you see the addition, "The terms of this agreement, including the list of focused acts provided above, in no way affect school administrators' obligation to report specific criminal acts as required by law." Again, something that the, frankly, the school board attorneys in those other districts have specifically requested. It is included in the agreement already. Mandatory reporting has always been a requirement, and that language is already included in the agreement. But they asked that we set it out again, and so we did. Also, in Section 3.10 at page 22, you'll see the section labeled Confidentiality and Access to Student Records. Now, that is actually the biggest change that we have added for this particular agreement. We needed to comply with FERPA and wanted to be sure that our agreement didn't violate any federal law. And so, the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act language was added there to be sure that we set out that school resource officers are not entitled to any confidential records of students, unless two specific exceptions apply, and that is that the SRO has a consent for release of information signed from a parent or an eligible student, allowing them to review those records, or if the principal or his designate determines that disclosure to the SRO without assigned consent is necessary in light of specific circumstances, and that's set out there. And to that end, we have prepared a consent for release of information, which I will share with you also in just a minute. Now, if you will also take a look at Section 3.11B, Data Sharing, that's on page 23, it also refers to that consent for release of information. To those of you who've looked at this agreement before and the prior versions, you know that we refer to a mutual exchange of information form. We have taken that language out and refer specifically to this consent for release of information. In Section 5 of the agreement, modification of the agreement, and Section 5 of that agreement, you'll find on page 26, on that particular page, we added some language to allow us to make modifications to the agreement if AOC determines that there are additional changes that need to be made, if they offer additional guidelines, and AOC being the Administrative Office of the Courts. And I have to tell you that our agreement is the model agreement that the Administrative Office of Courts is using for the entire state. We are one of the earliest districts to get this in place, and we are ahead of the curve, quite frankly. And so, they've developed an entire toolkit for the entire state to use, and our Wayne County agreements, our Eighth District agreements, are part of that toolkit that they're going to be putting out for the entire state. And I mentioned the consent for release of information. We have prepared a multi-party consent for release of information that is designed for either the student's signature or the student's parent's signature, and to disclose specific records. What we would like to see is that any students who participate in this program would sign this consent in order to get that additional benefit. And again, this multi-party consent has been passed through AOC, and AOC has given their blessing on this. And we believe that it complies with all of the different agencies that would need to receive that consent, the law enforcement, the courts, and satisfy FERPA and the schools as well. I would also point out to you that the agreement requires or refers to a warning notice, and we had some discussion about that in the past, the warning notice being issued by the school resource officer, and how that would affect FERPA. And what we decided is that if that notice was actually issued by the school resource officer, that that would keep us in compliance with that particular provision of federal law. And to that end, AOC has developed a School Justice Partnership Warning Notice Form. And if I could, I would present these to you to give you an opportunity to take a look at these. I had, unfortunately, didn't provide a copy of that. Didn't realize I was going to be bringing that to you, but wanted you to take a look at that. And also, with respect to the School Justice Partnership Toolkit, as I said, Wayne County is a model for the entire state, and so, we are ahead of the curve. When we have the workshop on the 12th, you will hear from Billy Lassiter, who is the Deputy Director of Juvenile Justice. He's going to discuss many of the logistical details that'll have to take place, the changes that'll have to take place to accommodate the additional juveniles who will be treated in the juvenile court system, and what that means for the schools. The signing ceremony is going to be at the end of that program. It's from 9:00 to 1:00, I believe it is, it's going to be at the Maxwell Center. You all should have gotten your invitations already. And my other purpose in being here was to give you an opportunity to ask questions. I did meet at least one of the new attorneys for the school board in an unrelated matter at a hearing, and mentioned the agreement. So, I'm not sure if you've had an opportunity to have your counsel review it. Do you all have any questions? Are you requesting any changes to the agreement? No?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I don't have any questions, but one of the things that I would like you to share with the board is how long have you guys, and I say you guys, this is a beautiful team, that was assembled with yourself, Defense Bar, Dustin Pittman, CJ Weaver, I mean, the folks that you have on the team are amazing. But how long have y'all been working on this?
We have been working on, it's been a labor of love, since I would like to say late 2015, early 2016. It started as a really small group, myself, my colleague Judge Heath, and Jennifer Short, who is our Chief Court Counselor, and I believe John Sargent, who is a member of the, a local attorney and member of the school board in Lenore County. And what happened is, we were, well, I still cover a lot of adult district court, and I was seeing, quite frankly, children coming into court charged with things like fighting in school. And by the time they would get to court, the children were either friends, or I had no witnesses. The district attorney knew absolutely nothing about the case. And it got to the point where it started happening a little bit more frequently. And we talked about it and said, hey, why don't we get together and try to do something about this? And it just so happened that the legislature was working on the Juvenile Justice Reinvestment Act. And our Chief Justice was also, had also convened a commission to study ways to make the court system better and to bring access to justice in a more appropriate manner to the folks of the state. And his commission actually had a subcommittee to study juvenile justice, and they recommended that the legislature raise the age of juvenile court jurisdiction. So, that got passed while we were working on our private little group. And from that, we invited additional folks to come in. We invited our Superintendent Dr. Dunsmore, the superintendent at Wayne, at Green and Lenore Counties, the High Sheriff of each of the counties, the Chief of Police, and eventually, that group grew. Because we wanted all of those stakeholders to have a part in this agreement, we invited folks from East Point so that we would have the mental health piece of that, so that we could provide those services and cover that as well as social services. And that's sort of how this came about, but we've been working on it for quite some time.
I definitely feel it's important for everyone to know how long you've worked on it, and the amount of resources you've used. And I am very thankful for this, because this has been a problem that I know most of us have seen for years, where students are getting in trouble and we're being sent immediately out for suspensions or long-term suspensions, referrals to the academy, when that wasn't always the appropriate answer. So, thank you for what you've done.
Thank you. Thank you for saying that. Any other questions from any other members?
What is the time of that meeting?
It is 9:00 AM.
9:00 AM, okay.
9:00 AM on the 12th. And I I hope that the changes that we have made here would also satisfy Wayne County. Again, attorneys for those other districts have looked at this, and we made the requested changes. And I know that FERPA was a particular issue, sticky issue, and I think we've complied with that now. I don't see that there are any additional problems to implementing this agreement. I would say one thing to you. The agreement requires that we have a program monitoring committee. And the members that you see listed in one of the appendices are people who have agreed to participate on that monitoring committee. We do not have a representative from the schools. And I would urge you all to perhaps consider volunteering yourself. Talk to some of your folks. We need someone from the schools to be a part of this. I mean, this is a school justice partnership, and we want someone from the schools to participate in the monitoring process.
And that leads me to my question as it relates to the program monitoring. And what kind of information would you be sharing, and particularly back to the school system itself? Do you have any ideas as to what type of information you might be monitoring that would be beneficial to us?
Absolutely. The, part of the agreement requires data collection. And so, we are asking the schools to provide certain information. If you look at, I believe that's on page 22 of the agreement, because this is going to help us go forward, we're asking from the schools to provide us with the number and types of disciplinary actions, number and demographics of the students involved, and referrals to law enforcement. From law enforcement, we're asking that they provide us with the number and types of school incidents for which law enforcement incident reports or warning notices are written, and law enforcement action on those incidents. And from support services, structured day, your mental health, the number and types of referrals they've received, the interventions that they have implemented, and the outcomes. And our progress monitoring team is going to track that data so that we can, after a period of time, go back and look at the effectiveness of this and compare it going forward with numbers that we've had in the past, to see if we need to make changes, to see if we need to make any modification whatsoever.
May I ask you a legal question?
You can.
Should that be shall versus should? Does that leave it too open-ended to where it possibly could happen?
On 3.11 subsection A, the first sentence, the following information will be, you're saying that should be shall?
I'm asking.
I understand what you're saying, and I think that's a good recommendation to modify that, because we certainly want the folks to collect that information and recognize that that's a requirement to collect that. But I would say, remember, the Wayne County Partnership Agreement is a volunteer agreement.
No, 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 it says no data should be included in the reports. That's what I'm referring to, identifying data.
Where specifically?
Okay, so, data collection, A. On a quarterly basis, the following information will be collected. No identifying data should be included. That's what I'm asking, should that be, shall be included?
No, we're talking about identifying particular students by name.
That's what I want to make sure doesn't happen accidentally. That's why I was asking.
Should not be included.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Judge James, looking, and I'm very familiar with the program. I was part of the initial meeting that was held at the courthouse. And I'm very, very pleased with it. Of course, you know, I've been on pretty much every side of this except for where you sit. I worked, of course, I've been a classroom teacher, a probation parole officer, and I've worked in the prison as well, so.
Yes.
Each of these. So, the point that I wanted to look at here in data sharing, Section B, the parents obviously have to give consent for the sharing of information. What happens, I guess hypothetically, what happens if the parent chooses not to give consent? Where does that leave the situation?
Then the student should not be allowed to participate in the program. Because in order for us to make the recommendations, do the things that we need to do, they're going to have to agree to share data. And I certainly hope that folks will see the benefit of it once we have implemented this program, and will want to give that consent.
Are there any other questions, concerns, or comments? Thank you very much, and we will see you on April 12th.
Okay, thank you all.
I don't think hers is that long, but after hers, we should do the public comment.
We don't have any public comments.
Yeah, the thing we can do, the spotlights.
And what spotlights do we have?
We don't have any.
Okay. No, we'll do that later. Okay, so we're going to do hers and then do theirs?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, Mrs. Livingood is going to make a presentation regarding military child education and the revisions that have taken place.
Good evening. My name is Jamie Livingood. I serve as the Military Liaison Counselor for Wayne County Schools. And we wanted to give you an update on military child education. And here with me tonight is our newly hired, newly appointed school liaison officer, Ms. Kristy Barnes.
Good evening. I'm Kristy Barnes from Seymour Johnson Air Force Base. I'm newly hired. This position has been vacant for about 14 months. So, we're excited to have someone in place to help represent our military family. So, I'm glad to meet each and every one of you.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Yes, no one is more excited, of course, than me, since I have been without a partner for that long. So, we'll get started on just kind of highlighting some of the things that we focus on as a team in our partnership with Seymour Johnson and Wayne County Schools. First of all, we'll go through just our military connection. As the state of North Carolina, we are the fourth-largest military-populated state in the country. So, a lot of things to focus on as far as that population goes. The military actually brings in, is part of $66 billion in gross state product, which is about 13% of our state's economy. It's the second-largest industry in the state of North Carolina behind agriculture. So, again, statistics that we can think about statewide, and then, of course, honing in on Wayne County. Seymour Johnson Air Force Base has a $705 million, or had a $705 million economic impact in our county. And that economic report was from 2016 Seymour Johnson. So, just to give you some highlights there, kind of, on that connection. We also, in thinking about that military connection, North Carolina has passed quite a bit of military-friendly legislation over the last few years, really over the last decade. And specific to education, a couple of pieces of legislation. One of those would be the Military Liaison Counselor positions, which are housed in the four districts that are home to military, the major military installations in the state of North Carolina. So, of course, Wayne being one of those, Craven, Onslow, and Cumberland. And the mission of the Military Liaison Counselors is to implement, research, develop programs and practices that are going to support the students, the military families within our school district. And of course, we're going to do that in partnership with our installation and the school liaison officers that are on those installations. We also provide subject matter expertise on the interstate. military-friendly legislation that we're referring to. So, in looking at Military Liaison Counselors, one of the other things that we do focus on is military student identification. Another piece of legislation that was passed was the Military Student Identifier. So, giving you a graph here of what our students look like, where they're located, what we've done is broken that down by school zone. So, whenever we say ACOG, we're looking at all the schools in that feeder pattern. Whenever we say Eastern Wayne, we're looking at the schools in that feeder pattern to include, of course, the high school down, middle school, and elementary as well. So, total in Wayne County schools, you're looking at about a 2,075 students population as far as our military-connected students are concerned. This data was pulled in Jan., as of January of this year, using our student, Military Student Identifier information. You can see where the highest population is in the ACOG and Eastern Wayne feeder patterns. If you'll notice, the next one, though, is actually Rosewood. We've seen an slight uptick there with the building and, you know, of housing and things out that way, so we have seen a slight uptick. Give you a little bit of data. And just to give it some perspective, over the state of North Carolina, there are about a little over 65,000 military-connected students.
Okay, so some of the partnerships that we have is the Military Child Coalition that started in 2004, and so this is the leaders from the military installation as well as key leaders here at the school system. We get together, have roundtable discussions about different things that are going on with our community, and try to see how we can come together to collaborate and solve any problems or either even praise some things that we're doing. We also have Jamie and I on board, where we are collaborating together, making sure that we're having those advocacy efforts and just teaming together to look out for our families. We also have the Military Liaison Counselors Meeting that we have about three to four times a year, and so that is that, the communities that Jamie mentioned with Craven and Onslow, we all get together regionally, and we talk about the different things and trends that we've seen in our different communities, and come up with solutions or even maybe pick up some of the items that they're talking about that they're doing in their areas.
So, in thinking about the partnership between our school district and Seymour Johnson here, this gives you kind of a quick list of some of the initiatives that have been ongoing, some that have been added over the last couple of years, and I can kind of go quickly through this and explain what some of these might be. An open dialogue, constant communication, that would be everything from the superintendent level down to myself and Christy in that collaborative effort to make sure that we are serving our families, and looking for opportunities that we can partner together, whether it's STEM-related, grant-related, things of that nature. Military student support, of course, we are, you know, kind of in the trenches providing some of that support, but we also, kind of coupled with that, are doing staff awareness trainings on at least an annual, depending on which stakeholder group it is, making sure that they are aware of the unique needs that our military children have. You know, on average, they're moving, if you look national average, six to nine times in their 13-year school history, you know, school career. So, it's a lot of transitions for the families, and so ensuring that we are creating a transition plan for our school district in making sure that that transition is smooth. Outreach, those could, that could be anything from our participation in newcomers orientation at the installation to participating in pre-deployment briefings and letting them know how the school is a part of that. Support system for their families. Speaking of deployment support, we do offer deployment support groups for our children. We have a designated webpage on Wayne County Schools, and with the same Seymour Johnson links with us. So, again, partnering, trying to make sure that that information is up to date, and that's huge for the transitioning families. Where do our families go to get that information? They're on that phone, you know, they're online getting that information, so making sure we have as much information at their fingertips as possible. We mentioned the Coalition. School Advisory Councils, I want to mention that because it is recommended with our schools that have a 10% or greater military population that they have representation of a military-connected parent on that school advisory council. So, that has been, again, another voice to kind of give that military, kind of really give the lens, you know, that, a perspective from that military lens as far as education is concerned. School recognitions, I wanted to mention that, of course, you'll see later tonight with your agenda that there is a proclamation for Month of Military Child. Month of the Military Child is in April, so I'd love for you to mark your calendars for April the 13th. It is a Friday this year, Friday the 13th. We are going to be doing Purple Up Day again, where you can wear something purple to symbolize, see, you're ready for it already. So, and it's really to honor military children and the unique challenges that they face in moving and transitioning and things of that nature. So, mark your calendars for that day to purple up for military kids, and we'll have a hashtag that we will send out so that you can even post a picture of yourself if you'd like to. And there will be other things going on as well for that. Identification of military students, we've already mentioned. Compact, we've already mentioned. I want to highlight the home base. That is where our parents can sign in and look and view their children's academic record, huge for our military families. Families are separated, whether it's a TDY, whether the parent has had to go on a year remote, we get that quite a bit, year remotes to Korea, whether it's that they're downrange deployed. They are able to access, and we have had individuals talk about their own accounts of being able to plug into their child's education in that way, so that's been a really great thing. Of course, Impact Aid is a funding stream. We, by identifying our students, that is a funding stream we can use and do use, and, of course, through Impact Aid, we then can access DODI grants, and we have. We're on our second DODI grant, third year, third year in that cycle, so.
Okay, so some things that are on the horizon is our student-to-student program. In December, we had a two-day training with the schools that are listed on the screen, ACOG, Eastern Wayne, and Rosewood. They had a couple of adult representatives, and then the students themselves came, and so they were trained and given a lot of tools to be able to help implement programs and activities for incoming students to make sure they're welcome, they know where the cafeteria is, they know all the ins and outs of the school, as well as this program has also helped those students that are transitioning out. So, they help, you know, give them a nice farewell and them transition onto the next school that they'll be going to. So, we're looking forward to all of them being implemented next year and those just hitting the ground running whenever they start in August.
Great. Student-to-student, we have been waiting on that program for a while. Other larger installations in our, in our state have gotten it, so we're really excited that we finally are a part of that team. We have had some recent state-level planning initiatives, and we are happy to say that Wayne County Public Schools hosted the first-ever North Carolina Military Impacted Superintendents Meeting. Kind of the intention was a roundtable discussion, really bubble up the issues from the superintendent's perspective on what is needed at the state level for supporting our military families in the K-12 education arena, and so there is more to come from that, but just to know, we had great turnout for it, great attendance, and great discussion. So, more to come on kind of the outcomes of that. We've also had briefings for the North Carolina Military Affairs Commission and the North Carolina Commander's Council, again, focused on K-12 education, and we've been a part of that discussion. So, it's been good work that we've been doing in the last year and a half. And lastly, military-friendly schools, this is something, you know, in that transition planning and in that conversation, criteria has been developed with that NC, North Carolina Alliance that we had discussed with the school liaisons and military liaison counselors, and our schools have all designated a military child point of contact for that, and we will, Christy and I are continuing that implementation process and planning process, and so, yay, finally having her on board means that we can move forward with some of these things together. So, do you have any questions for us about our partnership or military children in general?
Yes. First of all, I want to say that's, it's an excellent program. I was not a military child, but I grew up with a bunch of them. I played all my Little League sports at Seymour Johnson Air Force Base, so I knew a lot of them growing up. One of the things that I'm looking at here, where you have the students through the program and where you've had your training, and, of course, I see you focused on the schools with the higher percentage, are the students who are not at those schools who do attend some of our other schools, are they included in this training at all?
So, they were not included in the training. What we have been doing, because we didn't have the student-to-student program officially in the county of Wayne, we've had what I refer to as kind of homegrown ambassador efforts and homegrown welcoming programs that didn't have the formalized training from the Military Child Education Coalition, but have had kind of the local, you know, homegrown version of it. So, that would be, now, sure, we'd love to see it grow, so, once these get off the ground, our hope is that it can grow, even to, they have middle school, it's called junior student-to-student, and they also have elementary student-to-student. So, I'd love to even see it grow age-wise, too.
Mrs. Livengood, I'd like to know, what is it that we do at each of our schools regarding communication with these, with the military child in order to, I guess, promote camaraderie and to address any concerns or needs that they may have?
Sure. We have, it varies based on the campus. We do have welcome, a welcome letter that is sent out to new families upon their arrival. Some locations have had military clubs. That tends to be, our higher-populated middle schools have had those, Greenwood Middle, Norway Middle, and then we have deployment support groups or milit, kind of what we call military pride groups located in some of our elementary schools as well.
So, there's, there's not one thing that is at all schools?
Correct. Needs-based, so assess what the needs are and what the, kind of the population is at each location and what's going to work best in their schedule.
I have a concern about that because sometimes parents come to us and they are asking for transfers based on the fact that they want to be at a school that has an organized program that addresses the needs of the military child, and that has come up several times for us. And so, and normally, they want to go to a school where there's a larger population.
Sure.
So, you didn't, you didn't indicate at the high schools, I mean, even Charlesby ACOG at Eastern Wayne or Rosewood High, if there was any specific program taking place there with the students?
The student-to-student is the new program that is taking place at those three, for example.
All right.
Right. So, it is still, it has still been campus-specific, to answer your question.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Smith.
Of the, of the students, the 2075 number.
Yes, sir.
Do you have, I mean, you may not have this number, but do you have any idea how many of those actually live on the base and base housing?
I don't have it on me. I can get it for you. We have that information.
You have any idea, like a percentage? I mean, is it 10% or 20%?
I, I don't, I don't know right off the top of my head, but I can tell you that housing is about 50% of what it once was.
Why? I know it's not.
So, yes, sir. So, the number has drastically reduced over the years as far as how many are living on the installation.
Okay, thank you.
But that has also caused for the increase in some of these other schools as well because of the lack of housing on the base?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Anything else?
I want to thank you very much.
Okay.
And I want to follow your presentation with Mr. Smith giving the board a proclamation. We'll just need to hold on. Yeah, you can. Stand right there.
Just leave right here. The Wayne County Board of Education Month, Board of Education Proclamation, Month of the Military Child. Whereas thousands of brave Americans have demonstrated their courage and commitment to freedom by serving in our country's armed forces in active-duty posts around the world, and whereas nearly 2 million children have at least one parent currently serving active military duty, and whereas Wayne County Public Schools has over 2,000 military-connected students or 10% of its student population who are children of active-duty reserve, retired, veteran, and whereas Wayne County Public Schools has partnered with Seymour Johnson Air Force Base in the Military Child Education Coalition since 2004, and has committed to being an active participant in the Interstate Compact on Educational Opportunity for Military Children in order to help military children transition from school systems around the world, and whereas Wayne County Public Schools worked to help both students and staff effectively deal with military, military issues such as deployments, homecomings, and moving transitions through the use of a Military Liaison Counselor, and whereas Wayne County Public Schools works to maintain strong communications between the district and Seymour Johnson Air Force Base by working collaboratively with the base school liaison, and whereas the United States Department of Defense celebrates the month of April as the month of the military child, further highlighting the important role military children play in the armed forces community, and whereas the children of our service members are major contributors to the strength of their parents and make significant contributions to family, schools, our community, the state, and the nation despite repeated and prolonged absences of one or both parents, and whereas parents serve in the military, their kids serve too, and it's fit, and it's fitting for our district to pay tribute to military children for their commitment, their struggles, and their unconditional support of our troops. Now, therefore, we, the Wayne County Board of Education, do hereby proclaim April 2018 as the month of the military child for Wayne County Public Schools, and encourage all school personnel and Wayne County residents to recognize the contributions of our military families and to celebrate the spirit of military children across our district and nation. Dated this 26th day of March in the year 2018, Ms. Patricia Burden, Chair of the Board, and Dr. Michael Dunsmore, Secretary to the Board. And the proclamation is as read, here's a copy, and I will present it to you at this time, and I will say, as a proud member of the United States Army Military Police Corps, I serve this country, and I definitely appreciate what you're doing for our military children. Thank you so much.
Yes, we do.
When we go into...
We're so glad you're here.
Very well done, ma'am.
Okay, now, we need to vote this now. Okay. All right. Mrs. Jennifer Strickland will give us our proclamation for Month of the Young Child.
Are we, do we need to approve agenda first?
Oh, and I'm sorry, because I skipped around.
Reschedule me at the end.
Okay, we're going to move to approval of the agenda. All in favor?
Madam Chair, excuse, Madam Chair, are you going to, are you going to move item 3E to someplace else on the agenda?
Yes, I'm going to move item 3E to down to H, to item I under Board Action.
Are you going to take Board Action, or are you just going to move this, have this...
Mr. Schwartz, we have typically at 5:30, we do our individuals that want to speak and board spotlights, and since we have people waiting, typically, we try to stay on time with them, so if we could do them first, and I just volunteered to move mine further down.
Okay, so do you want me to go and bring him in?
I have it under, so it's there.
So, you want me to bring him in now?
I don't believe there's anybody.
Is that going to require any action by the board?
What? We're trying to figure that out.
Move in at E.
I got it. I'm your spotlight, it's there.
Okay, so it's, it's 10 to 6, so you want to do it now?
Yes.
Okay.
Because he's waiting.
All right, now, do we have to vote to make a change in the agenda?
If you're going to reschedule 3E to some other time, you should say when you're going to do it.
We're going to do it after H, under Board Action.
Okay.
Okay.
So, you need a motion to approve the agenda and move 3E to follow 4H.
Okay. I need a motion to approve the agenda and to move 3E to 4I.
No, to consider it after 4H. It'll still be 3E.
Consider it after 4H.
So, move, Madam Chair. And second.
All right. Thank you very much. All in favor, show by raising your right hand. Okay. At this time, I would like to call Mr. Keith Copeland. He's going to be recognizing students who participated in the Quiz Bowl.
Okay, if you don't mind, I'm going to have the NAACP committee members, my education chair committee members, come up to help me distribute the certificates. And I know there's some people that are out.
They're coming in now.
I have to come up front, Mr. Copeland.
So, come on up if you're here for the NAACP certificate for African-American History Contest. Come up front, up here. Please stand up here. Family, teachers, principals, whoever helped in this process.
And Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Would you come to this podium, please?
Okay, that's what I was.
Yes. And if our participants and parents with the principals just step back. So that, yeah, come back this way so that he can see you and you can see him. Yes.
We don't buy it often.
Okay, so, first of all, I want to thank all of the Board members for allowing us to have opportunity to present things to your students. This Board and the schools have been very complimentary in helping us with this project. Actually, this is the first year that we've had this type of participation. I think we had close to 70 different, I won't say participants, but at least 70 different pieces of, whether it's art, the Quiz Bowl, we had that many people. And that's been just a great success, and I want to thank you all for pitching anything like that. And I'm getting a little bit clustered up here, but that's okay. I'm kind of an emotional person anyways. But, and then, you know, parents and principals and staff, we really do appreciate how you have worked with these students. They were spectacular. I'm telling you, I've seen artwork and literature that I have, I just couldn't believe, I had to look at it twice and look at it and say, are you sure? This is a middle school student, just very impressed with it. And our Quiz Bowl participants, they were just awesome. I'm telling you, they were going at it, and it was just a great time. We had a great time with them, and I do appreciate all of you for taking part in this. So, basically, I'm not going to have a proclamation or anything. I'm just going to call out your name, and then one of my help, they're going to present this to you, just kind of step forward when I call your name. So, we're going to start with the history and the literature contest. So, our first-place winner, we have Jemaya Bass. Great job. I'm kind of emotional.
Mr. Copeland.
If it'd be all right if you could just have them pass down the board and we congratulate them also.
So, yeah, you want to, yeah, you could just have the Board congratulate you. That would be great. Your parents, if they're here, they can come around, too, and follow.
They're filming. Their parents are filming.
So, our second, another, we had a tie, actually, for literature. The other first-place winner was Zaire Webb. I don't know if he's here. Yeah, he is. I may as well give it to you since you're here. Great guy. And then, our second-place winner for literature was Kimberly Lee. Is she here? Great job. Our third-place winner for literature was, I may pronounce this wrong, but y'all correct me, Julita Cortez Torres. Okay. Good. Okay. Now, we're going to move along to our art contest. We're going to let somebody else hand out some, too? Okay, so our first-place art contest winner, I may say this wrong, Natalie Meg? I got you two, sweetheart. We had two first-place winners. Two first-place winners for art. So, maybe she's not here, but we are mentioning her name, and we'll get, we'll make sure that we get that to the school that she, I think she's at Wayne School of Engineering, I believe. And Cinderlin Melas, is that you? You are also the first place. Cinderlin, you got to shake everybody's hand, give them a big smile. And I'm telling you, this artwork was, I would not have wanted to be an art judge. No, uh-uh. It was good. It was absolutely wonderful. Okay, third-place art, again, Kimberly Lee. Here she comes. So, she was in more than one. She was just racking them up. Okay, now, we're going to move to our Quiz Bowl winners. So, and I'm sorry, I didn't read what this says. It says, "The Goldsboro Wayne Branch of the NAACP, this is a certificate of appreciation," and then it describes what contest they were in for outstanding participation in the 2018 NAACP Black History Quiz Bowl Art and Literature Contest. We thank you for a job well done. Okay. So, for the Quiz Bowl, we had Jennifer Henry, first place. She did not miss a question. I'm telling you, awesome. And we had some good, we had some good people. Okay, second-place winner, Chris Melvin. Good job, Chris. And then, our third-place winner was Jordan Basden. Is she here? Okay. And I'm telling you, they were all awesome. They really were. So, here's my, here's my thing about it. If your child is still in middle school next year, study the same questions all summer. And normally, we will add maybe 10 or 15 more questions each year. And we're already up to 300-some questions on that thing. So, they are doing an awesome job. We just want to give them a big hand, please. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Copeland, we would like to thank you and your committee and the NAACP for sponsoring such an activity for the community. You're using our students, and hopefully, community members will come out and support them doing this event. And we know it's a lot of work.
Yes.
So, we really appreciate you doing it, and it's our pleasure to recognize them.
It was great. And look, I learned a lot of other things over at Wayne County Museum of History. You need to go over there. It is up under a new direction. It is also open. So, go over there. They have a lot of some space, and so, just, we appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Now, we'll have Mrs. Jennifer Strickland with a proclamation for Month of the Young Child.
Did we have anybody come for this, the proclamation? Yay.
I'm sorry, Dr. Artis.
That's all right, Ms. Burden.
Come on up.
Come on up, Ms. Witcher.
Y'all go ahead and introduce yourselves before I do the proclamation. How's that?
Hi, I'm Karen Wellington, Witcher, pre-K coordinator.
I'm Carol Artis, Executive Director for Curriculum and Instruction.
Outstanding. Thank you, ladies both, for being here tonight. I do have the proclamation inside of this lovely green folder for each of you when we're done, but I'm going to read from the imitation copy. And bear with me, I was choking on a cracker earlier, so if I start coughing profusely, it's back to attack. All right, the Wayne County Board of Education proclamation, Month of the Young Child. Whereas, Wayne County Public Schools is committed to providing elementary students a learning environment and balanced instructional program that maximizes student learning and development. And whereas, Wayne County Public Schools has pre-K classrooms located at 11 schools across Wayne County and provides additional early learning options for families through its WeWings pre-K program and the School Street Early Learning Center. And whereas, these local pre-K programs are designed to foster early education experiences for your children, for young children, especially those who have identified financial need, developmental challenges, language barrier, or who are military dependents, in order to help them develop vital skills needed to be successful upon entrance to kindergarten. And whereas, Wayne County Public Schools recognizes the value of local early learning programs and initiatives which are crucial to young children's futures and the prosperity of our society. And whereas, Wayne County Public Schools is appreciative of the efforts of pre-K teachers and instructional assistants and all of the community partners, organizations, and agencies actively working to improve early learning opportunities, including early literacy programs to provide a foundation of learning for young children in Wayne County. And whereas, Wayne County Public Schools supports local, state, and national efforts to recognize teachers and others who make a difference in the lives of young children each and every day. And whereas, the Month of the Young Child, sponsored by the National Association for the Education of Young Children, is an annual celebration embraced by communities to highlight early learning efforts, young children, their teachers, and families. Now therefore, be it resolved, we, the Board of Education of Wayne County Public Schools, does hereby proclaim April 2018 as Month of the Young Child in all public schools and encourage all school personnel and residents to extend their thanks to the individuals working in classrooms and in early learning programs across Wayne County who are positively impacting the growth, development, and education of young children. Dated this 26th day of March in the year 2018, signed by Ms. Patricia Burden, Chairman of the Board, and Dr. Michael Dunsmore, Secretary to the Board.
Thank you.
Mr. Henderson will now present the proclamation for School Library Media Month.
If we have any media coordinators present, please come forward. Representing them all, right. Good. This is Wayne County Board of Education proclamation, School Library Media Month. Whereas, the School Library Media Program is to ensure that students and staff are effective users of ideas and information. And whereas, the School Media Coordinators and Technology Facilitators' role is to provide the leadership and expertise necessary to ensure that the library program is an integral part of the instructional program of the school. And whereas, the Board of Education has entrusted the media coordinator and technology facilitators in each school to teach the skills of locating and using information through traditional resources and new technologies, and to guide and encourage content and recreational reading as well as digital learning for every student. And whereas, lifelong learning begins and is systematically developed through the information technology skills curriculum taught in our elementary, middle, and high schools. And whereas, the Library Media Program contributes to the individual growth and development of all students while fostering both excellence and equity in education. And whereas, the School Media Coordinators and Technology Facilitators in Wayne County Public Schools have dedicated themselves to work for quality library media technology programs for all students. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Education of Wayne County Public Schools does hereby proclaim April 2018 as School Library Media Month in all public schools of Wayne County, and calls upon school administrators, teachers, students, and citizens of Wayne County to recognize and support this action and to participate throughout the month of April in the celebration of the 32nd anniversary of School Library Media Month, dated this 26th day of March in the year 2018, by our Chair, Ms. Patricia Burden, Chair of the Board, and Dr. Michael J. Dunsmore, Secretary of the Board. Congratulations.
Please introduce the librarian. Please introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm Stacy Hershey. I'm the librarian at Northeast Elementary.
Okay. Thank you very much for being here. Thank you. All right, I will call Mrs. Jennifer Strickland back again to do the proclamation for Autism Awareness Month. Do we have any staff here? I've seen some from the EC department.
All right, I get the big crowd this time. Oh, y'all might as well stop at the podium and introduce yourselves and then come line up. I'm going to get you. Come on.
Will you read, yeah, let them come up, but read the proclamation first, and then we'll shake their hands.
I was going to let them tell who they are real quick.
Yes.
You want me to wait on that?
No, let them tell.
Come on, tell who you are.
Okay. I'm Lauren Gaither. I'm one of the school psychologists.
Outstanding.
Hello, I'm Sarah Jensen. I teach the classroom for children with autism, the elementary level.
I'm Amy Ivy, and I'm one of the school psychologists and a member of the autism team.
I'm Jennifer Lewis, speech-language pathologist.
I am a new doctor, Mary Catherine Caffin, and I teach the autism classroom over at Eastern Wayne Middle School.
Hi, my name is Laura Hall, and I'm one of the EC program specialists and also a member of the autism support team.
I'm Jennifer McKeever. I'm occupational therapist, and I support autistic students with the team, the autism team, and also the diagnostic testing.
Good evening, I'm Amy Williams. I am the academically and intellectually gifted coordinator, and I also serve on the autism support team.
Don Herring, Assistant EC Director.
I'm Sanja Emerson, Exceptional Children's Programs Manager.
Michelle Hayam, Exceptional Children's Director.
I want to thank all of you for being here this evening, and here we go. Proclamation. Whereas, autism is a lifelong neurological disorder with current statistics bringing it to 1 in 68 children being diagnosed with an autism spectrum disorder. And whereas, autism affects each individual in different ways and can range from very mild to severe, knows no racial, ethnic, or social boundaries, and affects young and old alike. And whereas, our understanding of autism has grown tremendously since it was first diagnosed, and there is.
and there is no known cure for autism. And whereas accurate early diagnosis and resulting appropriate education and intervention are vital to the future growth and development of each student. And whereas the success of students lies in a broad spectrum of treatments and an informed public and community committed to providing support and service to individuals diagnosed with autism spectrum disorders. And whereas Wayne County Public Schools remains committed to its mission to educate students with autism and to support their families. And whereas the dedication of the Wayne County Public School teachers, instructional assistants, support staff, and school administrators are vital in the success of students with autism. Now therefore, be it resolved, that the Wayne County Board of Education recognizes and hereby proclaims the month of April 2018 as Autism Awareness Month, signed by Patricia Burden, chair of the board, and Dr. Michael Dunsmore, secretary to the board. Ladies, before I turn y'all loose, soapbox moment for a second. How many students do you currently have that would fall within your autism spectrum and our AIG?
We currently have 16 students.
Outstanding. And I totally understand the point of all this, but I'm going to say, I don't know that I want a cure for some of these kids.
That's true.
Some of these kids are exactly who they need to be, and it's up to us to help them become the very, very best that they can be, because lord knows, these are great, great kids. So, thank you all. And who would like to come get us?
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
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 Congratulations.
Thank you very much. You're my young man at those middle schools. Well, congratulations on your doctorate, and thank you. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. You have a handy? Mr. Henderson has a proclamation for Occupational Therapy Month. Now, this, will this impact the same individuals?
It's a different one.
A different group, okay.
Yes, we asked all those associated with occupational therapy if you would come up front. Whereas the profession of occupational therapy officially turns 101 years old in 2018. And whereas occupational therapists, certified occupational therapy assistants, and occupational therapy clinicians, educators, and students nationwide, along with the American Occupational Therapy Association, or AODA, have declared April 2018 as Occupational Therapy Month. And whereas the profession of occupational therapy makes valuable contributions in helping students to do the everyday tasks they need to do and/or want to do to be successful in school environment and in their community. And whereas the services of the occupational therapy are available in Wayne County Public Schools, providing support at screenings, assessments, evaluations, consultations, and direct and indirect services to our students. And whereas the success and productivity of Wayne County Public School students depend upon the effective use of the important services of occupational therapists and certified occupational therapy assistants. Now therefore, be it resolved, that the Wayne County Board of Education recognizes and hereby proclaims the month of April 2018 as Occupational Therapy Month, and calls upon all Wayne County Public School stakeholders to recognize the achievements and the contributions of these valued professionals. Signed by Patricia Burden, chairman of the board, Dr. Michael Dunsmore, superintendent of Wayne County School Boards. Congratulations. And if you would, I'll start.
Thank you very much for your service. Thank you for all that you do.
Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate y'all coming through last, too. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's a pleasure.
All right. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations again, yes. Thank you, board members. A job well done.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, this time, don't we need to have a motion to approve all the proclamations?
Yes, you do.
Who may I approve?
All right, okay. I would have been directed by my superintendent to do it someplace else.
Okay, well, go ahead. They're not, not letting me come.
But the lawyer, the attorney says we need to do it now.
You can do it now, or you may as well.
I need a motion for the approval of all the proclamations.
We need to identify.
Second.
All right, thank you very much. All in favor?
You're good.
Show by raising the right hand. All right, thank you. Next will be the approval of the minutes for February 26, 2018. I need a motion for the minutes to be approved.
Something about it, Chair.
I need a second.
Second.
Thank you very much. All in favor of the approval of the minutes for February 26, 2018, indicate by show of raising your right hand. Okay, all right. We also need a motion to, for the approval of the closed session minutes for February 26, 2018.
I move to approve the closed session minutes. And second. The motion should be to approve and release the closed session minutes.
Okay.
Second.
Well, I need a, can I just add it in?
Yes.
Okay. And you gave me a second. All right, thank you very much. All in favor, indicate by show of raising your right hand. Okay. Now, this is where we raise your right hand. Okay. Now, Dr. Dunsmore has a presentation on low-performing elementary schools K3 class size reduction projections.
I'm just going to stand up here. It's easier for questions if I'm looking at everybody. Which one do I hit? The purpose of this presentation is to provide the board members with information and analysis related to the board action taken on February 26 regarding additional staffing at our low-performing elementary schools. Wayne County presently has five elementary schools identified as low-performing, each of which will be impacted differently by this board action. On this second slide, and you may have seen this before, we've had this up for all of our schools at different points, as we talked about the K3 class size reduction that the State General Assembly has enacted. But in this, if you notice, the notes reflect year one of the implementation of House Bill 90. The board action above reflects what would have been year four of the implementation of House Bill 90. This board action was approved February 26, 2018, only to our low-performing elementary schools. One of the things I'd like to point out on this slide is it demonstrates the difference between state class size requirements for next school year, 2018-19, and the requirements approved by this board last month. The state requirements reflect year one of the implementation of House Bill 90, while the board action requirements reflect year four of the implementation of House Bill 90. Also, all projections are based on elementary schools currently identified as low-performing. We will not know the results of this year's test scores until October 2018, when the schools, when the Department of Public Instructions releases their low-performing schools list. So basically, that number could either go up or down for us, which would have an outcome or an impact on what we are doing. So how many schools are impacted? As I said, we currently have five schools, and this number may change. Some of the questions that we need to talk about is, does the board's decision only apply to current five low-performing elementary schools? If additional or different low-performing elementary schools are designated in 2018 in October, would we apply the same K3 class size reductions to those schools? And if they are removed from that list, are we going to continue that or pull the support? All of these decisions impact the numbers and dollars projected in this report. And I would also like to point out, we have a total of 12 low-performing schools. I have had members, individual members, that have come to me asking for various recommendations on what we could afford, and I would like to remind the board, we passed a resolution on February 6, 2017, with a 7-0 vote against implementation of K3 class size reduction in school year 2018-19 because it provided no funding and no plan for adequate classroom space. The board unanimously passed the same resolution again on February 5 of this year. A week later, the General Assembly adopted House Bill 90 to fix that solution. So we have been talking about this for about a year and a half and trying to get some plans in place when not only we could afford it by having the money sent by the General Assembly, but we would also have the new Meadow Lane Elementary School built, as well as the additional classrooms in the north end to address the space. The board's action on February 26 essentially requires the implementation of the original K3 plan prior to the House Bill 90 fix without funding or any plan for adequate classroom space for our five low-performing elementary schools. Facility options for schools with limited capacity. So what we've been looking at, and as I go through this report, there's a lot of information here. I provided this as we're moving into our budget work sessions, so you have this as some background and some information. We can utilize non-traditional classroom spaces, art rooms, music rooms, PE rooms, stage areas, computer labs, academic labs, parent resource rooms, anywhere else we can find. We can also.
Can I interrupt you just as I?
Yes, sir.
Because I want to understand, I just want to understand this. When you say utilize art rooms, music rooms, PE rooms, et cetera, are we going to be, is the action of this board, is it, are we going to be cutting teacher positions?
If I could hold that question later in the report.
All right, I'm sorry. I just, I just want to make sure that I understand.
No, I understand your question. I'm going to address that later, and I just don't want to jump around and get folks confused. But what we have to look at is where we're putting those classrooms in schools that we don't have space. We're also going to look at co-teaching, additional mobile units, and transfer students to other space, other schools where space may be available. So the way I broke this down is to look at our five schools specifically. I went in alphabetical order, so there was nobody prioritized. But if you look at this slide, at Brogdon Primary, enrollment projections for 2018-19 call for 34 K3 teachers by the state required formula, and 41 K3 teachers by board required formula, which is going to increase our number of teachers by seven. So we're looking at next year's projections now, as we're looking at teacher allotments going into our budget planning phases, and I'll talk more about the budget later. The impact on the facilities at Brogdon Primary, so we went out and looked at what we had space available. Currently allotted 35 K3 classrooms, teachers, again with 41 projected. We would need six additional classroom spaces. So room 15A is currently used for art, 15B is currently used for music, CO1 and 2, our computer lab. The spaces for the fifth and sixth classrooms, we would displace a pre-K classroom, an EL services, or an EC services classroom to get that additional space. As I said, this, we would have to look at, and I know we've had many conversations about putting art and music on cart spaces and using whatever available rooms would be at that time, or have the art and music teachers go into the classrooms to teach that timeframe. The additional changes to EL, pre-K, and EC areas is one of the areas we would really have to look about moving students, particularly with our EC classrooms because of the federal At Carver Elementary, again, it's the same formula. Their enrollment projections for 2018-19 call for 23 K3 teachers. With this new formula, we would have 27, which would be adding four teaching positions. Down at Carver, the impact on the facilities, we, those four additional class spaces, room 608 is currently used for reading instruction by two reading specialists, 614 is currently used for tutoring, 710 currently used for testing materials preparation and storage, and room 902 is currently used for tutoring. An additional space we could, you look at, is for the materials preparation and storage, but again, in our testing protocols, those things have to be locked up, secured, and people have to sign those in and out, so we would have to find other space for that. Going to Carver Heights, projections for 2018-19 call for nine K3 teachers, the state required formula, and 10 K3 teachers by the board. That's an addition of one teacher. Also, at Carver Heights, based on our projection, we're going to have one additional teacher than what we already have this year, based on those projections. On the second page, we looked at room 211 and 212 currently used for data and meeting spaces, and the second one is currently used for part-time ESL teachers. Eastern Wayne Elementary, the projections for 18-19 call for 21 K3 teachers and 25 by the new board action. So that's a difference of four additional teachers. Again, looking at Eastern Wayne, the impact, as you can see, D119 is currently used as a health classroom, D121 is currently used for tutoring. One of the options we have been looking at is our health and PET classes being taught in the gymnasium and free up a classroom space. Spring Creek's impact obviously is the largest, being the size of that elementary school. Projected enrollment next year, as you can see, and with the addition change, it would call for 33 and 40 with the new board required action. Our projections are all based on data that was taken March 12 this year, which is the sixth school month. And looking at the building, room 103 is currently used for Parent Resource Center for the southern end of the county, 201 is art, 202 is music, 402 is a computer lab, and 802 is currently shared by an intinerate art and music teacher. We could also repurpose, as I said, the Parent Resource Center, but that's also the only resource center we have in the southern end of the county. We can look at moving that to another school.
Is that correct? You got, you got 33 on the slide before that and 35 on this one.
I may have made a mistake. Thank you, sir.
One slide speaks to staff, the other speaks to the facility, so the 33, but they're slated to actually lose a couple of teaching positions in K3 next year because the involvement's going down a little bit. They're operating 35 K3 classroom spaces right now, so we would just rebuild two existing classrooms and then add five more.
Thanks. I went the wrong way.
I screwed you up, sorry.
No, that's all right. That's all right. So this is our total list of what we were looking at. It would be a total of what we came up with, 23 teachers. We used a formula basis for our teachers of $68,000, and I'm going to address that a little more in the financial piece of it because some of the restrictions that the state's putting on. Based on that, this would cost $1.564 million. And as I mentioned before, this is just those five schools this year. If that number changes next year, particularly in October, we would have to take a look at that at that time, whether we take funding or add funding.
That's a reoccurring expense.
Yes, sir. That would be a reoccurring expense for the next four years until the state fully funds that. Under budget concerns, and I'll spend a little more time with this so everybody has a good feeling of what we're talking about and why this is a concern, and why I have to say some of the things that need. As most of you are aware of, last year, we lost $2 million in low-wealth or supplemental funding with the state. We also, and I'm going to go over, this year, lost a half a million dollars in state flexibility, which is dictating why we use the $68,000 figure for our teachers. The K3 implementation is 1.6. The K three implementation is one point six. And I also added on that, any changes in the number of low performing schools, because that, over the next four years, could either increase or decrease. Obviously, our hope is it would decrease, but then as a board, we would have to determine whether we continue to fund those smaller class sizes or pull that away from them. The L P S elementary class size reduction, and as you read through this, the impact of the additional staff at five low performing schools is the one point six million dollars, and I did round that up just for a whole number. I did not add the incidental costs, and one of the things that I am struggling with is how I narrow this down. So we know we have probably enough desks and chairs, just based on some of the things decreasing that we can find. What we don't know how to judge is how much classroom materials that our teachers are going to need. And if we repurpose other rooms, all of our rooms, due to some great decisions in the near past, have smart boards and technology that we're going to have to run and add that in. We've been trying to estimate that as best we can. We have come up with two hundred thousand dollars for that, but that is a moving target. The low wealth funding, which is the state supplemental funding, and we've had conversations, and I wanted to spend a little more time on this slide, so I put a historical perspective, and I went back fourteen nineteen. And as you see, we had seven point one million dollars we got annually for that. Last year in seventeen eighteen, we got six point nine million. Please remember, what we were allotted in the formula was four point nine. So there was a two million dollar shortfall. And as we've had conversations with county commissioners a number of years ago, they adjusted our tax rates, which all feed into that formula. And what I want to highlight here, that's a non-recurring stabilization fund. We have no guarantee that's ever going to return. And even if our commissioners change our tax base and our formulas, it's still a two-year wait till that would kick in. And based on that whole formula, we're compared with every other system across the state, how they divvy that up, we may or may not get it. Now also, I want to say within that, the state provides the L E As, low wealth, where local revenue per student is below the state average. But what's not in there, there was an exemption for military county, or military base counties, which we have Seymour Johnson. There is a line item in the state budget. It specifically talks, counties with military bases would not receive cuts in supplemental low wealth funding. But they set the A D M at twenty-three thousand. So four, I think it was four and a half, five years ago, when that was put into law, they added Cumberland County and Onslow County. And unfortunately, I was told Wayne County was not at the table, and the twenty-three thousand is the exact A D M of Onslow County. So our numbers prior, as you can see, each year has been dropping, and we had the big spike last year. But I again want to reiterate, we're short two million dollars going into this budget. We do not qualify for that two million dollars. I know Mr. Bell was here earlier and was very instrumental in getting that money removed with, or replaced in the state budget for us last year. We've been having conversations with commissioners for that money. So we're already facing a two million dollar deficit. What's worrisome with that figure, that's a hundred and seventy staff positions, which is about five million dollars in total in staffing positions for Wayne County. That's a forty percent reduction in these positions and services. Right now, we're funding about sixty-five instructional assistance in that area, which is about two point three million, thirty-three tech and media assistance of about seven hundred thousand. And then I broke down the office related, which is H R, finance, C N I, bookkeepers, C N I, computer techs, data, managers and secretaries, which is about two million and plus or minus a little bit. The two million dollars, this is a huge, huge impact for us. We have to have that money. That's what we're talking people otherwise. The other things we're looking at this year is the elimination of our flexibility. And this is where we come up with that sixty-eight thousand dollar for our teachers. So in our A I G and L E P programs, which is English language learners, the state provides funding allotments in two different ways, positions or dollar amounts. Spending in most funding categories is limited or very specific purposes. One of the examples I can cite for E S L or English language teachers can be paid from the L E P funding category only. In the past, those dollars could be transferred to an open dollar account, which would allow us to take our highest paid state teachers, put into the state funding counter, and then in the other dollar amounts, put our lower paid teachers. So that was just a way of us, and Mr. Hayes and his crew, of working the budget that would save us money. By taking that away, we have no control over where we're putting those teachers into that. So that's where that three hundred and twenty-six thousand dollar comes from, that we have to put them in those funding categories. So it's a total of about a five hundred thousand dollar loss in budget flexibility. And as I said, the higher paid teachers, we aren't going to be able to transfer into those state allotments. So what I've done here, the state funding, and you've heard us talk many times on our enhancement teachers, which I'm going to, as we get in, the state will eventually fund enhancement teachers at a one to one hundred and ninety-one students in grade K through five. And as I outlined on the second bullet, is those as defined in H B ninety, and Department of Public Instruction, is adopted by the State Board, or dance, music, theater, visual arts, health, P E, world language, and any other classes that the State Board would deem. Starting in two thousand and nineteen twenty, not next year, but the following year, they will fund those positions at a rate of fifty percent of the one point to one ninety-one ratio. The following year, it'll be seventy-five percent, and then twenty-one, twenty-two, and beyond, it will be fully funded at the one to one hundred and ninety-one ratio. There is no separate state funding for enhancement teachers next year. Enhancement teachers would be provided, as in the past, through the K three class size flexibility. And what that meant, under State Board policy, we had a class size limit. We were allowed to raise that, I believe, three and four students, depending on the grade level, and then use that money savings to pay our art, music in those positions. I think it was about thirteen, fourteen years ago, they took that out. They thought they were streamlining the budget. With the immediate implementation of the four-year class size reduction in low performing, that flexibility, which otherwise would provide enhancement teachers, would be eliminating. With no other cuts, adding twenty-three teachers to our low performing schools would eliminate funding for twenty-three teachers in those enhancement positions.
So is that the cuts we're talking about?
So I was just to come back, Mr. West, that's the question you would ask in this area. Basically, we have fifty-eight enhancement teachers across all elementary schools. The funding formula, fully funded, would fund forty-four positions. That covers about seventy percent of our staff. So if we get into cuts, and as I mentioned in the prior slides, particularly with the supplemental or low wealth funding, the amount of staff that is tied to that, we don't generate revenue. So yes, we would be looking at staffing cuts. So part of the unknowns I put in here is the use of the fund balance. And I just want to outline, right now in our fund balance, we have approximately five point six million dollars. I'm not going to get down to the exacts. The local government commission recommends a fund balance should be a minimum of twenty percent of the Board of County Commissioners' yearly allotment of operational funds. So when they break those down, they give us an operational amount, which is right about twenty million. That equates, that we should have a minimum fund balance recommendation, but it's not in statute, of four million dollars. So we don't have a whole lot to play with of what we need to keep in there for emergencies. So again, I have fund balance up there first, and I have emergency expenditures. If we have a catastrophe, we need to fund or something, that's where we have to take that money. Our other areas we can look at is our Board of Commissioners to increase our supplemental funding. They can move that up or down. And as you know, in working with them, it depends on what their budget is. General Assembly action, we have no idea what the General Assembly, and as you're aware, with the House Bill ninety, that drug on for almost a year, and it was finally passed. And I put right under that teachers' salaries and benefits, because that's one of their top agenda items coming in here. So if they increase teacher salaries and benefits, which we all are hoping and praying they will, that's going to affect us and the additional staff we have to pay or provide for. And then lastly, was just any changes in that low performing schools list. So I think one of the things we really need to consider is moving forward and get down to the nitty gritty. And I put this up there, we will be operating on the edge of financial responsibility. My training, cutting it that close is not how I was trained. We have several options. We can cut other program areas. We can reduce support staff. We can reduce enhancement teachers. We also can, we have the flexibility next year to increase class sizes in grades four through twelve. So if we increase those class sizes, the teachers we save, we can push them down to the K three areas. We can deplete fund balance. We can seek local, additional local funding, which I work with them daily. We can lobby for continued low wealth stabilization funding. I will say the work with that, I know Mr. Bell had to leave, we've been talking about this daily, as well as with Mr. Dixon and our other folks. Senator Harry Brown's very involved in this. He actually wrote that original legislation. It's a line item in the budget. Unfortunately, that's not going to be addressed till next year on the biennium budget. So our hope is to get that in this year. So we're included because it's really hard to get money put back into the budget once they cut it. So we are facing a lot of things. I just wanted to say and go through this for the board. My hat's off to my leadership team and the work that they've been putting into this and what we've done outside the schools. But it's apparent that we know and value everything that we're looking at to implement this. And I know I've talked to some of you individually. I wanted to bring it in front of the whole board. And I'm going to end with just one example I brought up about increasing class size in four through eight. We could put our class sizes up to twenty-eight students in those fourth grades through four eight. That would generate twenty-one positions at the twenty-three. As superintendent, before I stay, and it would break my heart, but I want to look each you in the eye. I do, will not recommend that we take fund balance. I don't want to lose enhancement teachers. I value that. I don't want to raise class sizes, and I certainly don't want to cut staff, but we are faced with a very, very, very grim prognosis in this year's budget. And we really need to think long and hard as we move forward with this. But I'll answer any questions I can.
I was just curious about the number of students that's going to increase for four through eight, because if we're going, we're going to go to twenty, what do we have now for four through eight, typically, the average?
Well, what I averaged down on that, and I went school by school, so they're all different. You know, I can, it's really, I don't have a slide. I can send this form out to all the board members and give that to you. I also know there was some information sent out on the funding that we already have at our low performing schools that we've been talking about, and everything that we're putting together. As I said, I think my biggest concern right now is that supplemental funding. But I don't point fingers, I'm not going to blame the General Assembly, as I tell a lot of people, it's just like our own household budgets. Times are getting tough, we have to make cuts, and since we do not generate revenue, for us to increase programming, if there's not additional revenue coming in, we have to make cuts.
In your travel, how many other L E As in the state of North Carolina have implemented an immediate reduction in classrooms?
Immediate, I know of none. I know a lot of us, we have these conversations every time we meet as superintendents, and I think most of it, Mr. Smith, you had read some data a while back, class size matters. It truly does. We worked very hard to lower our class size. In fact, in some of these school buildings over the last two years, we have held class sizes smaller and put additional resources in there. If there's any questions, I'll gladly answer or speak to anybody individually.
I just have a quick comment. I do know of one of the schools within my district that is already carrying twenty-eight students to thirty students per fourth grade classroom, and their incidences of disruption and trouble, discipline issues in those classrooms is higher than they have ever seen.
Well, and one of the things-
And that scares me. On top of, students don't just need reading, writing, and arithmetic, the value of art, music, and P E is hard to measure, but it's critical, especially in these younger ages.
Well, the other issue, and most of you remember, Ms. Burden, and I'm sure Mr. Flowers, six, seven years ago, Mr. Henderson, you may have been on the board back then, when they cut the teacher assistants, how hard I'm sure you all did here in Wayne County, superintendents across the state, cut teacher assistants because of their value. They never put those back into the budget. And we fund an awful lot of our existing teacher assistants and support staff out of that supplemental fund.
Then, well, I've got a few questions. You correct me if I'm wrong, but the history of this whole conversation about class size reduction, some years ago, the state, and I don't know the timeframe, but the state came down with a directive to make these classroom size reductions some years ago, but allowed us the flexibility of having up to, what is it, twenty-four students?
Yes, sir.
But the original low numbers is what the state asked us to do. And they, with that request, they did fund money at that time. But the previous administration and this administration chose to take those monies that the state-
All right, I'll let you finish.
Like I said, you correct me if I'm wrong.
Okay. So on that formula, they did drop that down, but the State Board of Ed passed authorization for us to increase those numbers? Because what the General Assembly did not do, and still does not do, is fund the enhancement teachers, as I read. So there's fifty-five positions of enhancement teachers that we have across the elementary schools, and that's not district-wide. We get no money for. The only way we pay for them, and it was granted through State Board action, was to increase the class size. So as we've been lobbying the General Assembly, and a lot of the holdup in those negotiations was, when they did the analysis, that we weren't using that money to fund teachers, it came back that we were funding ninety-nine point seven percent of our teachers with that money. So once, I think it was, I might be off on that percentage, but it was up there real high. So what they found out was, and that's why the General Assembly is now going back and funding those supplemental teachers as part of House Bill ninety-one, or House Bill ninety. They're still not funding it to a hundred percent, as far as what we have hired, but it's a whole lot better than what we had before.
But with the state's original request to lower, there was some funding allocated with that, and some of that funding was used to create some of these art and P E classes. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
All right. So based on what, the history of what has happened, and my understanding, and what you've given us here is a fully implemented interpretation of cost.
Yes, sir.
Fully implemented, what the state would be asking us to do, fully implemented in four years, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What I understood was that we were going to begin an implementation process by some kind of degree. And I still feel like that's reasonable, to consider beginning the process of implementing. Because based on what the state did in the past, the request, and the fact that there was some funding involved in it, and that's not happened, there's no reason for me to sit here and feel like it's going to be a smooth process four years from now if we don't begin to prepare for this happening by some degree.
Well, that's what the rollout is with that. It's a four-year process. It's going to lower the size of percentage each year, and then each year the enhancement teachers will-
But the numbers you've given us here, correct me if I'm wrong now, but the numbers you've given us here are fully implemented.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. What my understanding is, that what I was hoping for, that we would begin a process by degree.
That's not fully implemented.
That's not what the bullet on-
I don't think that that's fully funded across-
I don't think that that's fully funded across the county, because all, all we were looking at was those low performing schools. Those five schools, not all of them.
That's, that's not the entire, that's not countywide. That's only the five elementary schools. And I said, we have 12 low performing schools.
And the vote was to do it immediately, the mandate?
Just on those five.
That's right.
Yeah, just on those five.
I don't have any other questions.
Dr. Dunstmore, you referred to a unanimous vote that the board took regarding the implementation of the, or not implementing the class size reduction. But at that time, we were talking about all low performing schools, were we not?
Yes.
Okay. So the vote that we took had nothing to do with the previous vote because of two different-
Well, it wasn't all low performing, it was all schools.
It was for all schools.
It was for all, all schools, okay? Not all low performing schools, all schools. The vote that we took is only referring to five low performing schools. Okay? So those are two different votes. And so I just want to make that clear distinction. The seven, the unanimous vote was for implementation, was not to implement all K three schools.
Yes, it was.
Okay.
If I may read the resolution, it was on K three class size ratios. So the resolution was specific to the K three reductions.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And the vote that we took, the 5-2 vote that we took, was for immediate implementation for the low performing schools.
Yes, sir.
And you talked about the additional space needs and all that for low performing areas, I mean, for the special needs areas. We still going to need that space four years from now, won't we?
Yes.
Okay? We're going to still need the space.
Mm.
Okay? And the money that the, the legislature has promised, how does that play into that?
As far as what?
The space.
Capital improvements are the responsibility of the local government or the county.
Okay.
And we are adding the, the classrooms on the northern end, the additional space at Meadow Lane. We've already been in conversation with county commissioners. I'm not speaking out of school for immediately going into another elementary building project so we can take advantage of the tier two money, which is on deck, not next year, the following year. And also, one of the initiatives with the General Assembly is a $1.5 billion-
Could be 1.9.
Is it, what is it?
1.9.
1.9 billion? I was a little late on that. I apologize. For building projects.
The bond, right.
So there's a bond issue on the horizon. I think we're better aligned than most counties. But yeah, we're, we're still going to have to take part of the, and you're on that committee of the work we've been talking on, the student reassignment and how we can move those lines to best utilize that additional space we have.
Okay. And again, I just want to stay on point. The, the, the space that we're talking about needing will still come from local funds, unless we get the bond. But either, either way, I'm, I just want to stay on point. Okay? Now, lastly, we talk about maintaining a, an emergency fund. I don't know a greater emergency for a school board than failing schools. I don't know a greater emergency. That's not something that you, in my training, in my humble opinion, I, that's not something you, you, you wait to, to implement. Low performing schools is, are, are our emergency. Now, if we have some other emergencies that come up, there's one of your bullets here that talks about seeking additional local funding.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? I think that that's an opportunity, more so than gloom and doom. I think it's an opportunity for the other funding sources to come on board and assist us in that. The seeking of additional local funding has yet to take place as it, as it relates to this. So I would like to propose that we have another joint meeting with the county commissioners so that we can discuss the need and the emergency of low performing schools as a, as a community emergency. Not just a school system emergency, a community emergency.
And I, I agree with you, Mr. Smith. I think that is and should be the highest priority of this board. My, probably the only difference I would have that is to implementing it overnight until we have the assurance of the county, we're giving them that money, because they have no responsibility. Now, other than I agree, well, but you understand what I'm talking about. We can go in there and other board members, we sat around a table last year, and we had them say, you give us your list and you give us the costs. We gave them those five areas. We went 0 for 5.
I have faith in my county commissioners.
Okay.
I have absolute faith in my county commissioners.
Well, my, 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 my purpose here tonight was what was enacted and what we know now is in my, I don't spend money I don't have, particularly the public's money.
Again, that's why I'm going to propose that we meet with them. Lastly, another, another issue that I wanted to make sure that we have clarification on since we've got the, the cameras rolling. There was some consternation after the vote and some, some blatant misunderstandings with regard to the movement of teachers from one school to another involuntarily.
Mm-hmm.
You did send out a memo to all the principals stating that that was not the case, correct?
I said that I would not move teachers voluntarily.
You did, you, you did send out a memo to that effect.
That I would not move teachers involuntarily.
You would not direct it to do that by the chairman of the board?
Yeah, she asked me to send something out, but it has, and I, I have to go on record, Mr. Smith. It has been publicly stated in a board meeting that we should consider sending our certified teachers, high performing teachers, to low performing schools.
And that was not stated by my motion?
No, I'm not pointing fingers to anybody. I'm not absolutely pointing-
And that was not stated by me or by my motion.
Okay.
Okay? So I don't, I don't have any issue with what you may have heard some other point or some other board member say. But Raymond Smith didn't say it, and it was not part of my motion. And you sent out a memo to the principals to that effect, okay? Now, the, the fact that that rumor or that, that untruth continues to swirl, I just want to make sure we clear that up. The motion that we made, that I made, and that was voted on, is talking about new teachers coming to Wayne County and prioritizing them as far as placing them at low performing schools. Not any teacher who currently is a teacher in Wayne County Public Schools with a contract. That was never the intent. And the request that was made by me was for the county commissioners to assist us in enhancing the 6% supplement, which is one of the lowest in the area, to, and use that as an incentive to attract teachers to our low performing schools. That was the intent of my motion, and I want to make sure that that is very clear. And when people put words in my mouth, I have no problem getting it straight, because that is not what I said and that is not what I intended. Just want to make sure that, that's clear. That's for new incoming teachers. And what I would like for the county commissioners to consider is enhancing this low 6% supplement so that individuals would choose to come to our low performing schools. That is all.
Dr. Dunstmore, my comment following what Mr. Smith has said, it has come up in conversations because when the statement was made that we need to consider in new hires, people went back and assumed we were talking about moving teachers who are presently here, and that would cause problems. But the, the, the times that I have mentioned, assigning teachers to schools where there is a great need has been based on new hires. And, and that has been, we've talked about it, but we had not put it into action. But, but, and there's been some confusion about it. But it was never meant to be teachers who are presently here. So I want the public to know that.
Well, and, and-
And that's not you. I just want the public to know that.
Well, I appreciate that, and I appreciate, Mr. Smith, what you said. I put the memo out. But obviously, as everybody understands, it reads that it's a board action. I can reassure them that they need to hear it from this collective body. So I appreciate that.
Well, Dr. Dunstmore, is that something that we need to bring up as a new vote to make that specific? Because when I pulled the video today, it specifically said prioritize placement of certified teachers at low performing elementary schools for the upcoming school year. It did not differentiate in the motion at any time. Do we need to do that at this time?
I would suggest you do.
I might add, I watched the board meeting the other night, and that's exactly what was said, so.
Well, I clarified it. You can watch this board meeting, you can watch this board meeting next week, and I've clarified it.
Clarification doesn't matter. It was what was voted on by the five that voted for it. The five that voted for it voted for exactly the way you stated it and was reread back.
And the five understand what they voted for?
I do. I, and I, I was one of the ones that voted for it, and I want to make it very clear that my vote was in new hires. That has been my conversation all along. It did not change on, at the last board meeting. New hires. And what we've been told every time it is brought up is no, that's not possible.
Then y'all shouldn't have a problem with revote right now.
And if you want to help your superintendent out, I would change, I would change that and get it in a motion.
If that's your intention, you should make a motion and you should revote. Because the interpretation of what was passed, I mean, there is no interpretation. It is exactly what was stated to do. It was not left open for interpretation. It was not left open to conversations held in offices with one or two board members.
Dr. Dunstmore, do you have a misunderstanding about the intent?
No, I think the intent, I, I've told you before, ma'am, I'll say it on the record. I know, and I've had conversations with both of you all privately and personally.
Thank you.
But if you want to help your superintendent out, the perception is, out amongst our teaching staff is, the intent is to move teachers.
Well, part of the reason the perception is out there, because you had individuals going out there telling principals that.
Okay, so let's start with, I didn't talk to any principals, but I had a teacher in our schools. I know they did, but I'm making it clear. I had a teacher stop me in Pizza Inn on a Sunday with my children scared to death that she was going to be moved without her even being considered. How hard is it to clarify it right now?
It was clarified by the superintendent's memo.
It was not clarified by the memo. It was a board action, and the board has to make those votes to clarify it. The superintendent does not clarify the directives of the board.
Ask the legal counsel, what's your advice, sir?
Do we need a revote?
I move that we clarify the motion by stating that we're talking about new teachers coming to the school system and prioritizing them to the low performing schools.
And I'll second that.
Discussion, attorneys?
You can do that, if you'd like.
All right.
I, I think you, you might want to think about the consequences of that. One being that you dramatically reduce flexibility for staffing, and two being that if you aren't going to add any more money to the pot, you might hurt recruiting efforts.
Again, prioritization is not forced implementation. It is prioritizing. It does not mean that you must do it. It is a priority. And if you cannot place them at a low performing school, then so be it. But it is, should be the priority of the superintendent to remove as many lateral entry teachers from our low performing schools, one of which we have over 54% of the teachers at that school that are not certified. It should be the priority.
Lateral entry teachers are certified, but on a different certification. So I just wanted, yeah, I, you and I agree on that.
I'm using the information that your team presented.
All right. We have a motion, and on the floor, and we have a second.
What, what is the motion?
The motion is to prioritize the placement of new teachers, certified teachers, at our low performing elementary schools, low performing schools. That is the motion.
Do you want to make that a motion to clarify the previous motion?
Motion to clarify.
Is that for new hires only, or anybody that falls underneath the three-year contracts that haven't been here long enough and they're still on the one-year certifications?
The term I used was new hires.
Okay, I have a second.
I was the second.
All right. All in favor, yes?
I, I have a concern about that particular motion, because in, in one of my schools in my district, we're constantly having new hires going into, into that school. It's repeated, it's over and over, every year, every year. And I think that that is one of the problems that has created that low performing status for those particular schools. So with that in mind, I would not be able to support that motion.
Were you saying new hires as far as non-certified new hires, or just-
Lateral entry, they, they don't have the experience, what you're, what you're talking about when you bring in the new.
So, so what would you prefer they do? What would you prefer the superintendent do for your, for those schools?
To be honest with you, I would prefer that he find some certified teachers around the camp.
I'm sorry, which is it?
With some experience, which I think has led to this discussion out here. Yeah, I'm, I'm one of the ones that said, we need to look at getting experienced teachers into those low performing schools. And by doing it, by with new hires, you're not going to get that. And we're going to continue to have the same problem.
And Mr. Hunter, I might add, in my former district, low supplement at neighboring counties with high supplements. We hired beginning teachers, they taught two years and left, for one reason or one reason only pay. And I also want to point here in our own county, this year, Goldsboro High School had an additional signing bonus and supplement for teachers. We had one person asked to be removed from that school this year, one teacher. And that was because her husband's being deployed, he cannot stay. And as you, I, I, we've had that conversation how many times, Mr. Smith?
Absolutely.
The supplement's huge. Johnson County is raising theirs again. They have a multi-year plan. Each of my three years, we've went to the commissioners with the multi-year plan that Dr. Lewis, Mr. Hayes and I worked on, and we gave them a multi-year program. We're never going to keep up with the Johnson Counties, but if we get it close enough, most people want to stay home.
And part of the lure for any teacher, again, it's a voluntary process, and that's why we, I'm calling for the meeting with the county commissioners, so that we can discuss the supplement. You may have some experienced teachers, Mr. Henderson, that would want to come to a low performing school if the supplement was better.
Supplement or stipend.
Yeah. So, so to, to vote against the motion is your, your, your prerogative, but we, we need to start somewhere. So I understand where you're coming from, and I respect your, your opinion.
Madam Chair, as I've said for the last eight years, seven years, going on my year now, I'm not an educator. I've never said I was educated. But it just seems like to me, and I, and I'm having a hard time grasping why this seems like it's so hard, that if you would have a, that you, if you have a failing school, that we should at least make an attempt to put a better qualified teacher there. And these schools that we're talking about failing, they didn't just get failing, they've been failing for years and years, and I don't know how far that goes back. So I'm not an educator, but it just seems logical that we would at least try to put our better teachers at one that's failing. So I support your motion, I second it.
All right, and we're going to have to take a vote. All in favor of, of the motion stating that we would hire certified, our new hired certified teachers would play, be placed at priority schools?
Priorities, prioritized to be placed at-
Be prioritized to be placed-
At low performing.
-low performing schools. That is the motion.
I think the motion was to clarify the prior motion, the prioritization of placement of teachers at the low performing schools would apply to new teachers only.
Okay.
Did I get that right?
Yes. Because you put in there that to clarify a previous motion.
Right.
All right, we have a, a second. Are we ready for the vote? All in favor, show by raising your right hand. Any opposed? All right. Vote carries, motion carries. Are there any other questions to the superintendent?
I, um, I do, Madam Chair. I, I say again in this process, that it's my interpretation of what we're trying to do here, you know, when you sit down on one particular word or one particular phrase, but I feel like that the intent of what we're trying to do here is to begin an implementation process. Now, what the superintendent has presented is a fully implemented cost and estimates of cost. I think we can all rationalize and realize that maybe that would be too aggressive for the 2018, 19, 1920 come-up year. But I'm looking, sitting here looking at these numbers where you could begin the process of reducing class size. I never vote to put more mobile units. I'm opposed to mobile units. I've always said that since the beginning. I don't want more mobile units. That's a defeating, never-ending spiral. That's a defeating, never-ending spiral, downward spiral, in my opinion. But I do think that you can come up with a plan, Dr. Dunsmore, where we can begin the process. If we have to take some money out of fund balance, then so be it. We ain't supposed to be in the banking business. The fact that we've got five and a half, 5.6 million dollars, and the county commissioners suggest that we have $4 million in round numbers, I think that's what you're talking about.
Local government commissioners.
Okay, local, not the commissioners.
But you understand, Mr. Flowers, that's what you voted for at the last meeting, was to do that immediately. It was not to look at it, it was to immediately implement.
As I'm trying to say, in clarity, where I'm at on this thing is, I would like to see us begin to implementation of the process.
And I appreciate that, I agree with you, but what the vote, what I presented was what was given to me.
But Dr. Dunsmore, you came from a financial perspective, and I understand that. But I also feel that this report is one-sided, because if I walked into your office as a principal and I needed some money for my school, I would have my Plan A, but I'd also have a Plan B. Because if I can't get all that I want, I might be able to get enough of what I want to feel successful, and maybe in time I can add on to get the rest. So I'm just saying there might be other ways. Now, if you have a school that has, I don't want to get rid of any art teachers, any ESL teachers, any music teachers, any PE teachers. That is not what I'm advocating. But I do feel that we need to begin to address this issue. And we've said that we could not do it by redrawing district lines. The transfer policy is being implemented. It's going to be slow because it didn't happen overnight. And so what can we do? What can, if we can take what he said and look at the first year of implementation, what will it be? If right now the class size is 23, what will be the first year of implementation? Down to what number? And then we look at that number and see what we can do from there. We also look at the schools, and if you have a school and there is absolutely no space, then maybe we have to look at some other things differently. But you have schools that have space.
And Ms. Burden, I agree 100% with you. And I'm going to stand in front of this board as your superintendent. That is not what I was directed to do with that motion. If you want me to go back and give you those options, we have them. But that's going to require another board vote. But until that happens, the vote was, we are implementing this next year. I have to prepare for that.
And that vote stands on its own. You're the expert that needs to come up with how to do it. That's what you're trained to do. Okay, that's your title, your job to figure out how to get it done. So what we've been presented with is how many ways it can't be done. And what Ms. Burden and I are asking for is how can it be done? Because we do have a school called School Street Elementary that, for whatever reason, was taken offline. A whole school that's not being used as a school. So when we start talking about space, let's go there. We have Wayne Academy. The top floor of that school is all offices. It's not being used as a school. I don't, I'm not feeling the, I'm not feeling the lack of space thing, because I know for a fact that we can create space if we're willing to. Okay? And this proposal, or this presentation, is about everything we cannot do. I want to hear about what we can do.
Madam Chair, may I say something?
Yes.
What I'm hearing from the board tonight is obviously, and I'm going to beat a dead horse to death, but it's the exact opposite of what the vote was the last time we met. And I so wish that Senator, I mean, that John Bill had have stayed here, so he could have came up and told us, look, the state of North Carolina was going to make this implementation statewide, district-wide, at every school in North Carolina. That was their plan initially. Through a lot of careful thought, meetings, information, thinking processes, looking at, saying, look, this can't happen. This is not feasible, this can't happen. So they went back and they came up with a four-year plan and the funding to implement this K3 classroom reduction size thing. And so that's what I'm hearing from this board tonight, is we're going to do it in increments. That's exactly the state's plan.
We want to start August. There is a difference. And you really do put that word out there, that they are going to cover the costs.
I didn't say they were going to cover the costs.
They're not covering the costs. They're going to give you some funding, but we still have.
They're going to increase the funding year after year after year.
But we still have to come up with some money until they get to 100%. Now, each year after that, it will get less. But we need to be clarified that they're not starting off the first year giving us the full funding.
And I understand that, but it's not going to cost this district $1.6 million for the next four years, every year to do it either.
Well, people in the public says that the low-performing schools are costing us businesses and jobs, this community, that's what it says. And the curriculum and instructional part of it stands strong. But there are other things that could enhance that to relieve us of these low-performing schools. And we're talking about the schools that right now are identified. You know, we can't ask you to try to wait to October and identify a school and then change everybody around. So it was the schools that are listed now. They went from 12 down to five in that vote.
So what do we do when the list comes out in the fall of this year, and we've got three more schools on the low-performing list?
We deal with what we have, and then we move those schools the next year. These schools have been low-performing for how many years?
A long time. And the cost of doing nothing is greater than 1 point however many million dollars we're talking. It's much greater. The cost of doing nothing is much greater to this community.
Like I said, you know, this school district didn't get, these low-performing schools didn't get low-performing in the last two years. This happened over a 20, 25-year period, longer than that, where several members of the board have had long tenures on this board. And, you know, we're dealing with the results of, I guess, what I've heard, the same thing, do the same thing, get the same results.
But we've been here for three years, and we've been talking about this for three years. And some instructional components have been put in, I understand that. But there are other things that need to be done.
It's just like the regrouping of the central attendance area. I mean, that's now on its second full year of implementation. I mean, the data that comes from the results of doing that this year is going to be valuable to see if that's working, if that's making a difference. We haven't even given it an opportunity. I mean, it takes longer than one year. I mean, like I said, this should be the first true year of data that shows us any kind of increase, gain, decrease, improvement or whatever.
So you're saying we only have to do, we only can do one thing at a time?
That's not what I said.
I'm asking.
That's not at all what I said. I just said, you know, there's been a plan, there's been a regrouping effort by the central attendance office and the leadership to try to make a difference. We haven't even given it an opportunity to see if it works.
The schools that we're talking about are not all in the central attendance area. All those schools that we're talking about are all over Wayne County. We have two in the southern Wayne feeder pattern. We have one in the Spring Creek feeder pattern. We have one in the eastern Wayne feeder pattern. And we have one in the Goldsboro feeding pattern. This is not a central attendance area issue. It is a Wayne County Public Schools issue.
I never said it was a central attendance area issue, Madam Chair. I'm just making a statement. I understand, and I've got sense enough to read and know where the schools are at.
And something I'd like to point out along those lines, three years ago, when I was lucky enough to win my election and get on the board, I had asked Dr., or excuse me, Mr. Dirksen and Ms. Ishi to come up with a map, so we could have a good visual of where our low-performing schools were. We put in the letter systems, we put in the grading systems. And one of the things that I have noticed over the past three years, and unfortunately, I did not bring my notes with me tonight, but some of these schools that we're concerned about have either met growth every year or exceeded growth. So they may be low-performing, but they're not going to stay there, because what is being implemented is working. It's slow, you can't change a home life, but what our staff at the central office and at these schools are doing is amazing. And I know that there was even one school, and this would have to pick Dr. Lewis's brain, but one of the schools, I believe it was Brogdon Primary, it might have been Brogdon Middle, actually missed making, I think, a C at one point, by one point. And it would have been an exceeded growth that year. There are good things happening in these schools that needs to be recognized. And again, we're just beating a dead horse, because unless there's a new vote to change, this is what's going to happen next year, Mr. Flowers. This is what is going to happen. We cannot move students to School Street, and we cannot move students to Goldsboro until we complete the redistricting. And the state's plan of four years to implement gives us the right time for central office to figure out the 90 to 105% capacity of the schools. It gives us a time to get Meadow Lane online. It gives us the time to get everything moving in the right direction.
It gives us the opportunity to redraw district lines at Northwest Elementary School, build 12 units there, build 12 units at Fremont, and redraw district lines to make Fremont a traditional school. And all we're asking you to do is to give some consideration to what can be done to help us move forward with these low-performing schools. That's what we're asking for. And if you can't do one, maybe you can do the other. If you're not willing to put the money there, and you're not willing to redraw district lines or move students, then what do you do? Because the numbers are there, and it has been two years that she has missed just by one point.
That's it.
And lastly, the, one of Dr. Dunsmore's bullets, the third from the last, seek additional local funding. I would like to make a motion that we seek another meeting with the county commissioners. If Dr. Dunsmore is not able to go forward with seeking additional local funding without that motion, can you do that without a motion, or do we? My recommendation is that we meet with them again. And that's what I'd like to do for this specific issue. And I'm putting that in the form of a motion, that we meet with the county commissioners again, specifically for the purpose of looking at enhancing our, enhancing our teacher supplement as a way to attract teachers to our low-performing schools.
I second. Any discussion?
Should we invite the city council into the meeting as well?
I think we need a separate meeting with them. I would like a separate meeting with them, absolutely.
Any discussion? If there's not any, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Excuse me, Madam Chair. I question that, this meeting with the county commissioners, I understand the spirit of your motion, asking them to help us. But the seven of us, six of us here tonight, and we can't even get our heads together. The four, seven more commissioners into the room, I don't know if that might muddy the water. I'd just like to see some action going into, if not next year, the following year. I mean, we can readjust our motion. Anybody can make a motion here if we want to, tonight. If we want to clarify moving ahead by some kind of degree or something like that, if the board can't get their head around moving on this thing. But the four county commissioners in it right now, I think it's just going to muddy the water, and we're going to be talking about it another year from now, nothing's going to be happening. And I would like to see something happen.
Well, you have not, because you asked not.
Madam Chair, I'd like to speak about the motion as well. I think we might be a little bit early in trying to go ahead and establish a meeting with the county commissioners. And the reason I say that is because there are several things that I think we, as a board, have talked about as far as asking for additional funding from the county commissioners. We've asked for additional, possible additional funding for the security, for security issues. We're also possibly looking at having to go to the county commissioners to ask for additional funding for some of our capital projects, particularly I'm looking at the southern Wayne issue. That might be something that's going to cause us to have to go to them. So I don't want to have to keep going back to them for every little problem. I think that once we get into our budgeting session, and we firm up exactly what it is we, as a board, would need, then I would be in favor of saying, let's sit down with those county commissioners at this point.
Well, there's only two elected bodies that have taxing authority and self-funding authority, and of course, that's the county commissioners, the city council. We don't have the ability to generate our own revenue. We do have to ask them for everything. So whether we ask them for everything all at once, or we ask them for everything in increments, we'd still going to have to ask them. So I understand where you're coming from as far as that's concerned, but as a wise man once said, this is the fierce urgency of now. We have low-performing schools, Mr. Henderson, that frankly need our help. We need to do whatever we can. And if we, if it means having more than one meeting with the county commissioners, then so be it. But at some point, we've got to stop delaying. We've got to stop delaying this. This has gone on too long, and I think Mr. West was exactly right. It's been going on for years, it's not a new problem. But I think this body here, this particular board, is not only willing but capable of trying to address that issue. It would be nice if we did not have low-performing schools. That would be utopia. But unfortunately, a third, fortunately, a third of our schools are low-performing. And all we're talking about is trying to address five. So if you don't, you know, you vote how you vote, but I just do not understand why it's a problem asking for help, because we don't have the ability to generate our own funds. We have to ask them. So we ask them now, we'll have to ask them later. We still have to ask them.
Madam Chair?
Well, we have a motion on the floor.
What's the motion, ma'am?
The motion is that we ask the superintendent to arrange for a joint meeting with the county commissioners. Specifically, I, well.
The motion was to seek.
It was specifically to supplement, regarding supplements.
The motion was to seek a meeting with the board of county commissioners to seek funding for enhanced teacher supplements to attract teachers to low-performing schools.
Yes.
So, all in favor? Show by raising your right hand. Motion failed. All right, where do we stand?
You'd have to say those not in favor.
Oh, I'm sorry, those not in favor? I did need to do that. Dr. Dunsmore, you're looking at me, and I'm looking at you. Well, are you, are we directing the superintendent to continue with the motion as we gave it on February 26th?
Come up with some options on how we can.
Ms. Burden, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion, put a motion on the floor if I can. And that motion is that this board, based on the discussion we've had tonight and some of the feedback that I've heard, I mean, it looks like this board is thinking along the same lines as the state is. I'd like to make a motion that we go back and accept and adopt the original state implementation of the K3 classroom reduction size.
That's your motion? And he needs a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion?
And the reason I'm doing that is because we've seen some numbers, and I know there's been some conversation about this is doom and gloom, and we've only looked at a four-year implementation. But based on the vote, and I understand, like I said, I'm not going to beat a dead horse to death. He did exactly what he was directed to do by a vote this board took at our last meeting. So I'm hearing some things from different board members. Mr. Flowers was one who, you know, said we need to do this in degrees and implementation in degrees. I mean, that's exactly what the state has presented to every LEA in North Carolina.
But you did not add that Mr. Flowers did say that he wanted to see something done for next year.
Ms. Burden, and you're exactly right. I was just picking out the part that I heard him that mirrors what the state's trying to do. And based on the information that the state has got, and the fact that they had enough... And, and based on the information that the state has got and the fact that they had enough information and thought to go back and change a decision they made that they knew was impossible for an LEA to do, that's my motion is for us, this board to, well, I've got a motion and a second. That's all my discussion.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second.
Who has a second?
Uh, Ms. Strickland. All in favor? Show by raising your right hand. All opposed?
That's what it is.
Madam Chair, I think instead of beating this dead horse to death, why don't we allow the superintendent to proceed with the motion that has been passed? But also ask the superintendent if he can come up with some additional options that we can consider, and he can bring that back to us and we can beat the dead horse again.
I don't know what kind of motion that is.
It wasn't a motion.
Oh, thank you. Thank you that it wasn't a motion, 'cause I definitely could not repeat it, I tell you that.
Mr. Henderson, that's the first dead horse motion I've ever-
I'll tell you.
Dr. Dunsmore, let me, let me join in with Mr. Henderson. Um, you got a number here on Carver Heights Elementary where you need one teacher sixty-eight thousand dollars. We can do that. I mean, but to-
But again, understand that that wasn't the motion that was made. I had to present that.
You have clearly articulated that. I, I grasped that. But I feel like the spirit of the motion was that we begin a process, um, and moving forward from that, and you showed us these numbers here that gonna be hard to swallow, but moving front, moving, uh, forward from tonight, I would like to see us come back with something. Now, Dr. Dunsmore, last year, we come up with four hundred and some thousand dollars out of the blue, out of the fund balance, to buy a modular unit to go to Thomas Road that I was not in favor of. So, uh, we can do something. That's what I would like to hear from you, sir, is a recommendation on what you think that we can do, because you clearly don't think that we can or should do this.
I never said that. In fact, I agree and I applaud the board's intent. My mere purpose here was also to bring to the board's attention, we're facing a lot of other cuts across our budget. And we have to take into account all of that.
So that's, that's what I would like to see, sir.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would again, uh, say to Dr. Dunsmore, whatever you do, please keep in mind that the focus should be on those low performing schools. And whether it includes all the elementary, or whether we might need to look at some of these other ones like Brogdon Middle School, uh, I, I would be fine with you bringing in recommendations relative to those, even though it's not a part of this motion.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is that enough direction? Do we have to put that attorney, do we have to put that in the form of a motion?
I'm wondering if he'll ever get to go to sleep again.
Well, it would- You had options, didn't you? That's just not what we asked.
It's, your previous motion stands. Your previous direction to him stands. It sounds like you're asking him to come up with a, with a Plan B that wouldn't be full implementation of Plan A.
If we couldn't do Plan A, we go for, we can look at Plan B and we'll have another discussion, like you're very familiar with.
Mm-hmm. Well-
Are you saying we do need a motion?
It's up to you whether you have one, I think if you-
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to move tonight that we instruct the superintendent to come forward with some alternate plans that could be implemented in the upcoming school year, based on the previous motion, that he doesn't seem to feel like is wise or prudent to do at this time.
Can I, can I get you to add into your motion with a focus on the low performing schools?
Well, with a focus on the low performing schools, but I think that was-
In the motion.
That was in the original motion.
I'll second.
All right. All right, we have a motion on the floor. Is there any discussion?
I completely zoned out. I need it read, read back to me.
I think I got this. I think the motion was to instruct the superintendent to come forward with alternate plans that could be implemented in two thousand eighteen, nineteen, with a focus on low performing schools, on, on approving the low performing schools.
Oh, my gosh, that sounds almost exactly what I said last month. Yes, I'll second it.
It's already been seconded.
Okay, I'm for it.
All in favor? Show by raising your right hand. All opposed? It carried, the motion carried. It, oh, yeah, I got you opposed. All right. Thank you, Dr. Dunsmore. Okay, we need a motion to approve the consent- Yeah, consent agenda. Do we do that or do we discuss these?
Yep, you're right. Nope, you're up to the consent agenda.
We don't, they're not gonna- Okay. All right.
I wanna, I wanna pull one. I wanna pull one.
Okay, well, we're ready for, um, a motion to approve the consent agenda. If you, if there is any need to, uh, prove, to, um, pull anything, um, you can do so after he reads it.
Excuse me, the, the motion to approve the consent agenda should be revised. All you need is a motion to approve the consent agenda and, uh, to revise the student transfer request approval to approve all the requested transfers.
Okay. We need a motion to approve the consent agenda and to revise, um, the student service committee recommendations.
To approve all the transfers.
Which is to approve all of the transfers.
A consent agenda is a group of items passed with a single motion and a vote. These materials and/or items are routine business or have been thoroughly discussed in committee meetings open to the public and attended by board members. No debate is allowed on any item included on the consent agenda. If a board member wants separate consideration of any item, it may be removed by request.
I need a first and I need a second.
Do you have a motion?
Yes.
I'll second.
All right, I, I get you the motion.
Who made the motion?
I did.
Okay.
And Mr. Flowers is seconding. Uh, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair, I, I don't know whether or not pulling it would be right or whether this could be considered in it, but I, I felt like the board really needed to hear about item L. And that is the recommendation that's coming from the Student Services Committee, which we would like to request, that any transfers we, uh, request that we get now should, uh, we should allow the leadership team to make the decision, uh, for, what is it, for the remainder of this year.
Right.
Yes, yes, sir.
The remainder of this school year.
And we put the stipulation on it that it had to be something that started the second semester. In other words, if it's in the first semester, it still comes to the committee, but anything after the first semester, Dr. Lewis and his staff-
I just felt like the board needed it.
Okay, and you did. It is written there, but I do, yes. To make sure that everybody-
Isn't that already in there?
It's in the, yeah, and it was in the board packet. Yes. So we're ready.
Then unless somebody wants to pull it from the consent agenda, you can go forward with the motion.
Okay.
Okay, that's what I wanted to get to, you know.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Henderson. But all in favor of the motion as it stands? Show by raising your right hand. All right. All right, it's time for our board members and superintendent's comments. We will begin with Mr. West.
You always start with-
Okay, I apologize, Mr. West.
She started with me the last time.
I'll, I'll go ahead. I mean, that's fine.
Thank you.
First off, I'd like to just thank Dr. Dunsmore and his leadership team for the hard work they do. I mean, it doesn't go unnoticed, y'all do a tremendous job up here, and you have done a tremendous job and you've made some major accomplishments. I mean, and, you know, this is my eighth year on the board, and the board does, we, we do good things. We've done good things for Wayne County Public Schools. I mean, we've built new schools, we've made new additions, we've, in the process right now, building a new Meadow Lane school, Edgewood Developmental School. Just like I said while ago, the regrouping plan that, that Dr. Dunsmore and his leadership team implemented two years ago, hopefully this year we'll see some positive results from that. I mean, we won't know until the data comes in. I'd just like to see this board show our support for our superintendent, his district leadership team, staff, principals, and all nineteen thousand students of Wayne County Public Schools. And we can do that by continuing to lobby our county, city, state government officials to find more means for funding to support Wayne County Public Schools and make it a better place. One very important thing that we can do as well is continue to lobby for calendar flexibility, which would make a tremendous difference, in my opinion, in Wayne County Public Schools and every school. But those things, those are some things that we can do to try to support this, this leadership. And the other thing that we can do as a board, not only to show support for the leadership team, the superintendent, but for these nineteen thousand students that we have, and the principals and the staff, and the hard work that they put in every day at every school in Wayne County Public Schools. We as a board can start showing up and showing our appreciation to these people for their hard work by attending events that they put on. I mean, we, we have a number of things that we can attend as board members, and I'll have to say this, and I'm not, trust me, I'm not beating Chris West in the back, but I, I try to go to as much of it as I can. And do I have other things to do? Certainly I do. But when I took the oath to try to help improve Wayne County Public Schools, I think part of that job is showing these people support. And by going to math fairs, science fairs, battle of the book contests, choir ensembles, band ensembles, athletic events, and granted, there's something that we could be doing every night for Wayne County Public Schools. And I realize it's a tremendous undertaking for us. We all have families, we all have other things that, that are important to us in our life, but we took an oath, and it's not just about drawing a stipend one time a month. We, we, we need to go out and support these people, and we need to, to show these people, let them see our faces at all these, at all these events they have, because they put a lot of hard working effort into it. And I think we've talked about the K-three classroom reduction size enough, so I won't bore you with any. I had quite a bit I was gonna say about that, but I've been able to say some of it. The other thing, and I, and I don't wanna, I'm, I'm not trying to step on anybody's toes, so please let me clarify that. But this board is made up of seven different members, diverse people from different backgrounds, different walks of life. We've got one member on this board that's got any kind of measurable public school educational experience. And outside of that one person, not one member of this board is qualified, certified, or has the educational training experience to perform the duties of the district leadership personnel of Wayne County Public Schools. So let's do our part as a board, and let's, let's support Wayne County Public Schools, let's be visible, and let's do all we can, and let's support them, and let's fulfill our role and responsibility as board members, and let our district leadership do their part. That's, that's my comments, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Flowers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have no comments.
Mr. Smith?
All right. First of all, I want to congratulate all of the, um, individuals who were highlighted in our board spotlight tonight. That was, um, tremendous. The, the proclamations that were read were absolutely tremendous. The, um, individuals in the various departments, um, who, um, the, the children from Charlesby Acoch, the Agriculture FFA Group, um, the Military Education Group, um, it was all, it was, it's very good to see young people, and especially the NAACP. That was, um, that was tremendous. It was good to see, uh, the young people, and I'm glad to know that, that program is evolving and progressing and, uh, growing on a daily basis. That is, that is what this is all about. This is not, this has never been about individuals, you know? People want to make it about individuals. This has never been about individuals. When you, when you raise your hand to, uh, serve in public, you don't have to agree, but you don't have to be mean either, you know? But it, it is, it is what it is, and, you know, you have, um, people who, who bring different agendas to the table. But at the end of the day, if it's not about children, then that's, that's not what this is. This is, this is strictly about children, and those of you who are participating in the uplift and the enhancement of children, I applaud you. As it relates to, um, the issues that we have that are before us, again, this is strictly about children. We have, we have, uh, a third of our schools that are low performing. And as was stated earlier, that's not new news. But I can't sit here and just talk about it in a cavalier fashion, as if it is not urgent that we address these issues. And I think Mr. Flowers said it best. We voted to spend half a million dollars on putting some mobile units at an elementary school, rather than do our due diligence, which is maybe move, tweak, redistrict, or whatever you wanna call it. Rather than do that, we spent half a million dollars so we wouldn't have to do it. And here we are squawking about a couple, a couple, a more hundred thousand dollars in addition to that. But that, that half a million dollars only helped one school. And when you start talking about school safety, you know, um, and, and, and in my measurable amount of education experience, I think my, my education experience is measurable, even though some people may not think so. In my measurable experience, it is definitely a safety issue. When we put mobile units attached to the back of a school with the emphasis being on school safety, I would not recommend putting mobile units at any school. You can't secure them like you can secure a main building. That is a major concern of mine. And I think it's the most insecure part of a school are those mobile units. And one SRO can't be everywhere. So I think that we really need to consider all of these things when we talk about our children. It's, it's 'cause this is about the children. This is not about individuals. I can take whatever you throw at me. Believe me, I can. I have no issues with it. I'm, I'm built like that. But these children are defenseless, and we're sitting here arguing over whether or not we're gonna help them. That shouldn't even be a discussion. And I'll end on that.
All right, Ms. Strickland?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I actually have about two pages worth of things that I wanted to say, as well as a couple of open tabs on my computer that went over the responsibilities and duties of board members. And I decided to close those all out and just let that lie, and pray that everybody attends the next board, uh, member duty class one oh one when it rolls back around, because I think we have forgotten that in many instances. Speaking of security, that over one point six million dollars would be much better spent on securing our current facilities at this point. We hear that we do not have the ability to raise money, but we certainly have the ability to spend it. And to continue to vote, to spend money without evaluating the best needs of the entire school system is completely irresponsible. And what I saw tonight, well, let me back up and say, I went back and reread Dr. Dunsmore's evaluations by the board members, Dunn, a little while back. And I don't know who put what comments where, but one of the things that I found striking was that somebody blamed him for the low performing schools that we have in Wayne County when he had been here for less than two years. Okay, I'll, I'll stop there on that. But I will say this, Wayne County Public Schools did not get in a bind since two thousand and fourteen. Wayne County Schools got in a bind a long time ago because of cronyism and favoritism. And when we sat here tonight, or not tonight, well, actually, yes, tonight, and voted to continue to push forward with the way that we're going, we voted that we show a complete lack of confidence in our teachers- voted that we show a complete lack of confidence in our teachers, staff, and principals at our five low-performing schools, all of which I would challenge you to look at their EOG scores, look at the work that they're doing, 'cause they are doing amazing work, and I have confidence in them and their abilities. And when they need help, they know that they can come to central office and they can ask for help, because the doors have been opened in this school system in the last two and a half years. People no longer worry about speaking out because they might get fired, like it was before I got on this board. And I am absolutely sick of watching this group of fine people get belittled and just beat down to the point that the morale is hitting an all-time low. It is pathetic, and a real solid evaluation needs to be done. There's nothing wrong with putting in extra effort in the low-performing schools, aside from the fact that we have some schools that only get an extra $50 in supplemental funding for their students, and they somehow make it work, whereas other schools get over $1,800 in supplemental funding for their students. That's okay, because there's needs in those schools, and I get it. But you cannot ignore all the hard work that is going on and the improvements that have been made in this county. And when you go in and say, "Just because you're a lateral entry teacher, you're not good enough, just because you're a beginning teacher, you're not good enough," that's a great way to make people want to run to Johnston County, and those are all my comments.
Mr. Henderson?
Madam Chair, I would like to take exception with comments that has just been made by my former board member. I feel as though we, as a board, are looking at what is going on in the school system, and we are trying to assist and advise the leadership team on what our concerns are. Now, yes, there have been low-performing schools, and there have been low-performing schools, schools for years, but one of the reasons it's been that way is because we have not taken the time to focus in on what is it that those schools particularly need. And I think it is a critical point now, where we sit down and say, "Enough is enough." We have to do something, because just like Chairman Burton said, the public, the community, the people, they don't look at just low-performing schools and think of just those low-performing schools. They look at it as Wayne County Public Schools. And until we can create a different dialogue about what's going on in our schools, we're not gonna see any improvement. And so I wanna applaud the board for the comments that have been made tonight, because at least it gives us an opportunity to understand where each other is coming from. And I do hope that the leadership team, Dr. Dunsmore and his team, does not take this to heart, because what we are trying to do is speak from our experiences as to what we see might be beneficial to those, to our Wayne County Public School students. I am extremely excited about the fact that we are looking at low-performing schools. And hopefully, through all of our efforts as a board in talking about this, we'll be able to begin to see the evidence of those schools moving out of low performance. I'm just that optimistic. Now, you all may not be, but I'm optimistic that when you bring something to the table and you begin to talk about it enough, eventually something's going to change, and for the better. Those are my comments, Madam Chair.
All right, Dr. Dunsmore?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be really brief. Two things, I just wanna put a shout out. We lost a staff member this week, Ms. Katie Van, who was an instructional assistant down at Carver Elementary, passed suddenly, and I just wanna put a shout out to her family that, and keep them in our thoughts and prayers. And also to Mr. Pridgen, I've been in contact, he's on the road to recovery. I know he's a little stir-crazy, being caught up in the hospital a little bit, but look forward to him being back soon and his valuable experience as we undertake our hard work. And to all the staff in the, in the county, I do thank you for all your hard work, and I'll tell you what I do on behalf of me and the board, I'll give everybody next week off. That's it.
I'm glad you added the board into that. All right, I would, first of all, Mr. Copeland, you and your committee and your organization have, have worked over the years, and you've done an outstanding job, and I know how exciting it was for you to see all of those participants this year. And you touch upon not only the quiz bowl, but their ability to write and to be artistic, in terms of the displays and the pictures that they've drawn and other things that they do. And so I wanna thank you for coming and recognizing them and letting us know what our students are doing and what they are involved in. I'm gonna ask one thing, however, and that is, make sure you send not an invitation, but a save the date, 'cause I believe that we are invited, I know that we are invited, but just to save the date so that we will be aware of when it is taking place. And so, because I missed it this year because I didn't know when it was taking place, and I, I didn't think about it really until I overheard you in a conversation. So that's what I'm gonna ask you to do for next year. I want to say to Mrs. Copeland and to Mrs. Cindy Grant, outstanding job last week at the band concert. And I see it as a concert, because I guess that's what it was, but we invite in clinicians, people from the outside, to direct our students. And our staff and band prepare them for the clinician to come in and work with them. What is very prideful to me is the compliments they make, not only about our staff and the hospitality that they receive, but they really go out of their way to let us know that what happens in Wayne County does not happen in every school district. And they really applaud the parents for supporting the children, and then they applaud the children for the work that they do and the time that they spend with them. And I think, Mrs. Copeland, that's a day and a half. Also, I would like to applaud all of our school principals and the staff at the schools for the kids who participated in the human relations contests, essays, and our poster contests. And we had many, many students recognized that night, and also the students that worked with that committee. They handled, they were the emcees, and they recognized the people who would be winning awards that night, because the awards were given to citizens or organizations within the community that are making a difference for us. And we did have, our students were there to receive their awards, and those that were not were accepted and to be given to them at a different time. So I want to say thank you very much. I know that Mrs. Copeland also works with the city committee, Human Relations Committee, in getting our staff and students involved in that experience. I wanna thank her very much for doing that as well. I know that a lot has been said, but I want to make it very clear that when I talk about lateral entry teachers and beginning teachers, it is from the perspective of the work that has to be done by the principals. When you have a large number of new teachers at your school site, the amount, the number of observations and evaluations are different than when you have veteran teachers. So it is not that these, that these individuals are not good or cannot do a good job, because they can, but it is the work that is placed on that teacher, I mean, that principal, as well as trying to deal with the curriculum and instruction issues of also working with a new staff. So when you have 50% of your teachers are brand-new in your building, you have work to be done. And so I applaud the principals, but we are not downing the people, and we are not saying that they cannot do a good job, but the work that has to be done, because you have that many people in your building that are new, is what my focus is on in terms of reducing the, the number of brand-new teachers or lateral entry teachers at one school site versus another. I also, I know that there are many issues out there, and there's many ways, based on our, our own opinions and how we feel about things. But sometimes you have to go in the back door to get to the front door, to get the information that you need. And tonight, the superintendent and his leadership team, and I know they work diligently, because I was up here, and they put this information together for us. Now, it allows us to do many different things, and that is what you saw tonight, 'cause everybody has something different or some direction that they think might be the one to go. But if we come back and we keep in mind that we are addressing the needs of our students, no school wants to be low-performing, no school wants to be a C-school, D-school, or F-school, because it does not reflect the work that is going on inside that building, but it does send a message out to the community. And when they talk about that school, they don't talk about the school and the good things that are going on in there. They talk about it has a grade of D, or it is a low-performing school. And that impacts the children in that building, as well as the teachers in that building and the principals in that building. It is not an easy job. Sometimes you've come in after someone else has led it, led that school, and you have to start where you are. You have to take those kids where they are, and you have to work with that staff in order to move forward. But it is very, very devastating when you do all of the right things and you are just one point short. Because it doesn't change the perspective of what is seen in the community. And so with, I'm not, I'm not in any way saying that you haven't done a good job, or the leadership team hasn't done a good job. It's something that five members of the board voted for, and we would like to see something occur. Now, we might have to move away from all five elementary schools, but the point is, we need to address this issue, and we need to start now. One year early is valuable. One year later can cause more problems and make the situation even worse. So that's where I stand, Dr. Dunsmore. My feelings about this has nothing, no slight to the work that the leadership team is doing or has done, nor the superintendent. And I, I think I can say that for the board members who may be agreeing with me, that we need to do something at this time. So thank you very much. I need a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
One, one kinda, kind of legal note, and kinda probably picks up on the spotlight tonight from the Quiz Bowl, and, and an education note, since the board meeting began, Linda Brown passed away, the plaintiff in Brown versus Board of Education, and I'm sure that was at the very least a Quiz Bowl question, but she passed away this evening during the board meeting. So that she had an enormous impact on everything we're doing here and everyone here.
All right, thank you very much. And since you spoke up on that, I went back and read our board policy, and our board policy says, "Ask the board attorney if he has any comments."
Well, there you go.
So from now on, you're on the spot. Do I have a motion to adjourn? I need a second.
Second.
All right, we have a second. All in favor, show by raising your right hand. Thank you very, are you any opposed? I guess not. Thank you.